So you can talk again. I'd like to call this meeting to order and could you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? And we have council member Sinella leading us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will be leading the invocation this evening. Lord God, I thank you for this wonderful city of San Marcos. I thank you that all of us here that are here are to celebrate our city and that we would all put the city first with all of our thoughts and our feelings up here on the dais and that we would serve with integrity and kindness toward one another. I thank you that you are a wonderful God and I pray this in your name. Amen. Okay, could we please have a roll call, Mr. Skalik?
Yeah, council member Musgrove.
Present.
Council member Nunez.
Present.
Council member Sinella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. And with that, if the council could please join me in front, we have some presentations this evening. Well, one. Okay, welcome everyone. I am going to convene our December 12th meeting, our regular city council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and could you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? And we have council member Sinella leading us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will be leading the invocation this evening. Lord God, I thank you for this wonderful city of San Marcos. I thank you that all of us here that are here are to celebrate our city and that we would all put the city first with all of our thoughts and our feelings up here on the dais and that we would serve with integrity and kindness toward one another. I thank you that you are a wonderful God and I pray this in your name. Amen. Okay, could we please have a roll call, Mr. Skalik?
Yeah, council member Musgrove.
Present.
Council member Nunez.
Present.
Council member Sinella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. And with that, if the council could please join me in front, we have some presentations this evening. Well, one. So one of the best parts of our job up here are that we get to have a celebration of our young people in our community. And today is no exception. We have over 70 players from the San Marcos High School football team. And I'd like to bring up Coach Tom Carroll to join me. So you had quite the year, didn't you?
Yes, and I'm telling you, San Marcos, the city of San Marcos, you couldn't, if you didn't get a chance to see these boys play, you couldn't have been more proud of them. They represented their high school so well all year, their families so well all year themselves in the city of San Marcos. So couldn't be more proud and I just want to say thank you so much to the city council for recognizing these young men and what they did and everyone else involved in the program and I couldn't be more proud of them.
Oh, thank you. So we are here to recognize San Marcos High School Football Team, the Knights, for their awesome achievement in winning the Palomar League title. So I have certificates for everyone, but being that there are over 70 of them, we decided to save a little bit on time and let you get back to your evening and maybe homework if you happen to have some this evening. But we have honorable certificates for each one of you for an impressive season with the San Marcos Knights. The coaches and the team have brought considerable recognition to themselves, their school, and of course, the community of San Marcos. And we celebrate their dedication, camaraderie, and sportsmanship. We, the city council of the city of San Marcos, are so excited to celebrate you and your successful season presented today, December 12th, 2023. So now if we can have you all come up, and you know what, did you want to say a little bit about, a little bit about the other coaches too that are here this evening?
Oh, without a doubt. Yeah, so can we have the whole team come up? Is that okay?
Yes, please.
Yeah, yeah, so coaches if you can come up, players if you guys can all kind of come up and, I'm sorry, find some room around you here.
Was there one really cool moment of the game, the last game?
Yeah, so we, you know, I talked really quick about how proud I am of these guys. Really, a lot of the work starts back in January and for those that are not graduating, that work's going to start up here pretty soon. It's a huge process, it's a huge commitment, and really exciting this year that we were two years removed from going 1-10 and really struggling to, again, winning that league title, like our mayor mentioned, and winning, going 9-3 this year. So the turnaround these young men have been a part of is nothing short of amazing and they've really brought a lot of pride back into the school. Our coaching staff, we have a couple members here, we have Coach Nix, he's been working, we're well over 10 years together, works with our wide receivers. We have Coach Chad Makihailey, works with our linebackers. We have several other great coaches, some that couldn't be here tonight, but, and then we have a lot of great parents, a lot of them are here, as you can see, a lot of great parent support. The thanks could go around, but this is, it's a big operation and I just couldn't be more proud of the success these young men have had this year. And again, I'd like to say thank you for the acknowledgement because I'm really, really, really proud of them.
Thank you. So, you know, I saw this on social media and I thought, how cool is that, that our Knights? For, how many times have you guys won this title?
So it's been pretty rare. We had a share of a league title back in 2013, so 10 years ago. It's the first time we had won an outright league championship where we were alone, so we went 5-0 in the league this year, I believe in 42 years, if I'm math correct, since 1981. So it was a great season.
So very exciting, but I do want to thank you parents that are out, that are out here this evening. Seriously, these kids have done a great job and we're really proud of them as a city. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, get that to you.
Thank you.
Now we get to take a picture, so I'm not sure how Phil's going to get us all in here, but short people, that means your council members, kind of in the front.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, absolutely. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations. Of course. All right, what about next year? Any of you juniors or all seniors?
I'm senior.
Oh. I can only speak for myself, but definitely one of the best parts of this job. Okay, moving on, we have the consent calendar. Are there any items that any council members wish to pull? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve tonight's consent calendar.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next up is going to be oral communications. We do have some speakers this evening. First will be Frank Petralia, followed by Ellen Amsbury-Bergy, sorry, followed by Richard Kaminsky, and then I'll get to the next ones after that. So that's the order. So the first one is Frank Petralia. Come on, come on up to the podium. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to push, no, no, it's okay. I forgot to push the microphone back for you, so if you could just pull that toward yourself, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
My apologies.
No, no problem. Okay, I'm up, right?
You are?
Okay. Good evening. My name is Frank Petralia, I'm the president of the Capalina Homeowners Association in El Dorado Mobile Home Park at 1515 Capalina Road here in San Marcos. This is the third time I will be addressing the council concerning the regulatory agreement, also known as the Long Term Lease Accord for El Dorado Mobile Home Park. Tonight, a posse followed, please raise your hands, our homeowners. First, I want to make clear there are three parties in this long-term lease accord, the park owner, the homeowners of El Dorado Mobile Home Park, and the city of San Marcos. We are all named in the accord. On May 10th, 2022, Ellen Ambergy, the HOA treasurer, and I asked the city council for help in getting the park owner, Kleeg Enterprise, to abide by the lease and give us the necessary calculations to verify the purchaser base rent increases, also known as the turnover rents, when a homeowner is selling their home. At that time, Kleeg had been denying the request of verification for over six months and direct violation of the lease. Then it took almost 18 months to finally view the calculations of the turnover rents that would be the new rents for the homes sold in the park, after being ignored and delayed numerous times by both the park owner and unfortunately, the city of San Marcos. Once Ellen and I verified how those rents were to be increased, we determined the lease was being continually breached and violated with miscalculations of the turnover rents since Kleeg took ownership of the park. The spreadsheet we obtained from Kleeg of the calculations for the turnover rents was given to the city manager and the city attorney in a meeting two months ago on October the 6th. We were told we would receive a response to those charges we were making, along with the response to a proposal we made concerning the lease. As of today, we have not received a response from the city. Now the homeowners are involved in another dispute in what we believe is an illegal pass-through. The homeowners were notified on or about November the 20th that the park owner has scheduled to start a pass-through for an increase in property tax in the amount of $44.44 a month beginning on March 1st, 2024. That operational cost is already being paid in our base rent. It has been paid each year since fiscal year 2019 when Kleeg Enterprise took ownership of the park, again in our base rent. Now Kleeg wants to make it a separate rent charge for the homeowners. It has been paid in our yearly base rent increases, it has been paid by the overcharging of the purchaser base rent increases that I first spoke about, it has been paid by the lack of services, including no maintenance for the common areas or roads in the park, it has been paid by cutting the onsite managers' hours from 40 hours a week to 20, and it has been paid by the overall deterioration of our park, where Kleeg has done absolutely nothing in the way of investing in our park. We expect the city to follow through on these disputes under Exhibit F of the regulatory agreement, where the park owner must justify this increase in our rents. The homeowners of El Dorado Mobile Home Park want the city, under Exhibit F of the accord, to provide arbitration and a solution to these disputes with the park owner. Now Mayor Jones and council member Mr. Musgrove. In our meeting on October 6th with the city attorney and the city manager, we were told that our proposal would need to come back to the city. Can you please tell me what our proposal was and if you had gotten it concerning the lease?
I actually would ask Mrs. Peak, I wasn't, we weren't at that meeting, so if maybe she could make some clarification.
This is not an agendized item, I would be happy to provide a status report to the city council.
Okay, all right. Okay.
So that hasn't taken place yet?
Well, as Mrs. Peak just said, it's not an agendized item, so we can't actually answer questions today.
Got it. No, okay, I got it.
And there was, this is not conceding or assuming that any such promise was made, so those are, the city council will be briefed on the discussion that we had, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Ellen Amsbury, followed by Richard Kaminsky, followed by Michael Duncan.
Good evening. I hope I don't get tongue-tied because I have a tendency to. What Frank failed to mention was a breach of the contract in 2022 when we received our rent increase notification that was done incorrectly. The calculation was wrong and the way the notification was distributed was done in the wrong manner. The CPI used was incorrect and not disclosed on the notification. We took that fight on ourselves, not involving the city of San Marcos, but we don't have the money and resources to legally fight all of the violations against our long-term lease accord. We need your help. We've been told you will help if it's a health and safety issue. When you talk health and safety issues, there are a lot of factors involved. We have people in El Dorado Park that barely make ends meet with the existing space rent. They have income that doesn't even reach $1,000 a month. An increase of approximately $20 a month for our space rent alone eats up their social security increase for 2024. $44.44 added for the park owner's taxes brings their increase to just under $65 a month. That's a huge increase for people on a low and fixed income who have nowhere else to go. This kind of increase will impact their health because it will cut into their already low food budget, forcing them to choose unhealthy foods for their sensitive bodies. There is no justification for adding a pass-through for property taxes. The park maintenance leaves a lot to be desired. The roads have not been serviced since 2010, that's going 13 going on 14 years. Common areas of the park are not kept up on a regular basis. Weeds grow three to four feet before they cut it down, and they don't pull them up, so they grow back quickly. The homeowners are required to do all of the maintenance on their own spaces. The pool heater has not worked since 2019. There has never been a pass-through for property taxes. Those property taxes have always been included in our base rent. Please don't dismiss us. We have pleaded for help from the city council of San Marcos with no response. You need to take our grievances seriously. You can't just sit there and listen. You need to hear us and take action. The last time we met with the city manager and city councillor was on October 6th, 2023, Ms. Bender and Ms. Peak. Both promised us we would definitely get a response. We are still waiting for that response. We are old and tired, but we won't go away as long as these issues are not resolved.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. As I mentioned previously, this is not an agendized item, so we can't take action this evening, but we will definitely be getting back to you. Thank you for coming. Next up, Richard Kaminsky, followed by Michael Duncan, and then I think it's just Rick or Rich. Rick. And then we will have speakers after that as well. Richard Kaminsky.
All I really wanted to say was the upkeep of the park is deteriorating. The roads are very bad, landscaping leaves a lot to be desired, and the overall ambiance of the park is deteriorating and nothing is being done about it. And I just wanted to, and the increase in the pass-through tax is totally illegal, in my opinion. And I guess that probably doesn't mean that much, but that's the reason I'm here tonight.
Thank you for your comments. As I previously mentioned, this is not agendized, so we can't actually take action on this this evening, but we will definitely get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Michael Duncan, followed by Rick, and then John Mosher will be after that.
Good evening, my name's Michael Duncan. I understand the politicians are very busy. You don't seem to have enough time for us. This is El Dorado Park, we've been talking with you, or at least the HOA has been talking with you guys for the last two years with complaints and problems that we have with Kleeg. I really wish that you guys would make an effort, get us on that agenda, so you can talk about it, so you can accomplish something. We're hurting. I'm not yet at a point where I'm going to be starving to death, but with their double-dipping and throwing the property tax at us, it's, to me, it's a double hurt. They're not only taking the $44 that they're charging us in the rent, they're now adding $44 onto it. So in my eyes, they're double-dipping, making a bigger profit, and we need to really kind of look hard at people that do things like that. I appreciate your time and I hope you help us.
Thank you. Next up is Rick, followed by John Mosher, and then after that, it will be Phil Perry.
Good evening. I'm Rick, I live at the Mobile Home Park again. I've lived there since 2018, and we get our yearly increase in rent. Nobody has any problem with somebody making some money, but I've never had a pass-through on property taxes. I've lived in California longer than I'd want to mention, and my mortgages or my rent, property taxes have always been included in that. I think this guy, to tell you the truth, since he screwed up last year and didn't get his raise, he's pushing this through just to kind of twist the knife in our bag. And I think that's just uncalled for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, John Mosher, followed by Phil Perry, and then John. Yup, yup. Yabacchio.
Hello, Mayor, Sharon, Maria, Michelle, Ed, Mike, Helen, Phil. I'm here tonight about our Mobile Home Park, San Marcos Mobile Estates, similar problems. We've discussed it before, this year, we were waiting for the CPI numbers to come out, which they came out today. Year-over-year increase is 5.2%, which would be applicable when our owners go ahead and put in their rent increase request, basically for the 1st of February. The social security increase this year was 3.2%. So even if we were able to get them to agree to just the 75% of CPI, like our other sister cities in North County have as a cap, that's like 3.9%. So everybody on social security is still underwater, just like the people at El Dorado are talking about. As you know, by even visiting our park, we have a similar maintenance problem. At our rent review hearing two years ago, agreed for a large increase based on them fixing our roads and streets. That job was half-done. That increase was netting them another $100,000 a year. By the time this year's over, the 279 they were quoting will have already paid them, and we still have half our streets falling apart. Many of the problems I showed you when you came and actually viewed the park a couple years ago, they're still there. They do similar, they refuse to acknowledge the problems in the park. I had said something last year after people at our park had voted for an increase about a meeting when I was here talking to you about energy prices and CEA, how to get along that way. And what I found on that was the park manager came and told our residents that if they came here, they would have to, could have to pay 10.5%. So they were better off taking the 5.7 that they were negotiating to try and have them take at that time. That's why the people at that meeting voted to accept the increase. And unfortunately, there was only 60 people there. We've got an uphill battle again this year. We have some people that are turning on our residents instead of sticking together and trying to get their owners to actually take care of our park. And talking to other mobile homeowners around the city, I find they have similar problems in their parks, which is exactly what we're hearing tonight, what to do about it. One thing we've talked about changes to the ordinance, but being careful that we don't wipe out a good ordinance. One other suggestion though is Oceanside actually has like a rent review commission, they have a separate entity, and every year they inspect the parks. The parks have to pass inspection before an increase can be granted, any increase. So at least there's a way to police these guys, police these owners. Our owners would rather pay attorneys out of LA every year instead of using the money to simply fix the problems in our park. You think about the thousands of dollars they're spending on those attorneys, and some of the problems I showed you are minimal, really. I would think a 500 here, a thousand there would take care of some of the property problems, a few thousand would take care of some of the retaining walls, the streets and driveways, that's part of the regular payment that we make to them. I mean, that's part of what they're supposed to take care of, period. So even to request additional to fix something that they haven't maintained for years, in my mind, is ludicrous. Any other business I've ever been in, if I tried to pull that, it wouldn't work. If I would have done it, I would have been fired within a month, and yet these people just keep doing it and keep getting away with it, under a fair return. Well, Oceanside has a 50% as a fair return. I don't know, there's very few industries around where you can take 50% off the top and then say that you're doing your job to maintain, and yet these parks are getting away with something like that and using less than that and using their numbers to increase and make it look better. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, that I'd like to discuss further how we can get something in our city to help protect our seniors better. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Phil Perry, followed by John Yabaco, and then Marlene Walder. Phil Perry?
I'm Phil Perry, I live in El Dorado Park, and we're back to that. There is no mention of passing through increased taxes until we fought him for a rent increase two years ago, in which he, the owner, waited until too long to request an increase and then used the wrong CPI. Since that time, things have gotten even worse in the park, and now this $44, 44 cents, this feels an awful lot like retribution to me, rather than just a pass-through. That's about what I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, John Yabacchio and Marlene Walder. My apologies, I really do apologize if I said your name.
No, you butchered my name.
My apologies, I'm so sorry.
That's John Yabacchio, I live in El Dorado Mobile Home Park, good evening. That's John Yabacchio. I live in Eldorado Mobile Home Park. Good evening. As I know you're aware of now, that pass-through property tax, it's a double dip. We already paid for this, and we have been paying for it for four years, ever since KLEAG took over the ownership of that park. The other issue is the breach of the lease, and I have firsthand on that. I tried to put my house up for sale two years ago, and I asked for rent verification. I requested it as outlined in the long-term lease, and I was denied. The miscalculation of these turnover rents, it made it impossible for me to sell my home, and I took it off the market. You know, that coupled with the conditions of the park, which is atrocious, is the worst I've ever seen it. And it's, you know, unsanitary conditions. Maintenance is zero, no maintenance at all. When the way they deal, well, KLEAG deals with it by eliminating whatever our amenities. A pool heater eliminated because it didn't work anymore, and no plans to replace that. When something breaks, that's what's done with it. They toss it away and just don't replace it. And they don't fix anything, and, you know, it's, I'm just trying to catch you. The clubhouse bathrooms, I'd like to make a point of that. They're totally unsanitary. They have, nothing's been done to them. The urinals are leaking, and there's mold in there, and it's totally unhealthy for people to even go in there. Again, another issue that they've ignored. It's been reported. They just ignore everything, you know. So I'm hoping that the city council can help us with this, and that we can say that the city came to our assistance in this and helped us in these matters. You know, it's like David and Goliath here. We're going up, KLEAG Enterprises, we're going up against them, and we need help from the city. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Marlene Walder.
Mayor and city council members, I have a few different things, but I really can sympathize with Eldorado because it sounds like she's speaking for me, the lady who was up here. First of all, it's over a year and a half almost now with the pool situation and the streets. They finally did a few of the streets, and then they got dug up because the electricity went out on 26 homes for 45 days, I believe, all in total. Only three days or four days they were without any electricity, and then they got generators for them. They supposedly fixed the electric, and the two homes that had lawsuits and won the lawsuits and the park refused to fix. Those people both ended up selling because they couldn't get their washer, the dryer, to work because the houses wouldn't take 220. Well, last week, I think it was, they had to turn the electricity off again for those people. Not all of them, only, I think, four homes were without electricity for two days again. And that street, I think, was one that was repaired but had to be dug up in order to lay new electric lines. But we had talked about another street where there were huge holes. I mean, a 4x8 sheet didn't cover the hole totally. They had to use two sheets in some cases, and that stayed open for over seven months. The pool, they finally, the pool they're not doing, but they worked on the jacuzzi. They were going to replace it. They decided it was too much money, so they decided just to resurface the jacuzzi. And I don't know, they made, somehow, when they were doing that, the jets okay, but refused to put electric lines because it meant tearing up more in order to do electric for the lights at the pool, or the lights at the jacuzzi. So that wasn't done. And that went out, four days after they said it was fixed, the heater went out. I don't know if they replaced the heater or they did a Band-Aid with the heater. The heater's been broken. The pool, that, I'm sorry, not the pool, the jacuzzi, did not work for over a year and a half almost now. But they fixed it, you know. We're supposed to be very grateful that it only took a year plus to fix it. The landscaping, we were told, could not be, use any form of mulch because it creates subterranean termites, and they decided they're going to fix up to make it look prettier, which it does, but they laid mulch throughout the park on their things, and they did clean some of the banks, but they didn't replant them. And winter is coming, and people will have mudslides back into their yards again, and they don't clean up after that. And I could go on about a lot of other things that haven't been done. My windows, which were part of the parks, as we've discussed a few times, and yes, it is the park's responsibility, as I said before, but now, from before COVID, and they still haven't done anything about it, and so I don't have a view out because of the plastic paper. Anyway, the complaints are still there, and if we come up for a rent increase, I'm hoping they get denied even, not even the 2% or 3%, because I keep paying for these things, and I don't see any return. I'm not using the pool, but I don't think it's right for us when we bought into that park with the understanding we would have a heated pool that works. And it's 60-plus years old, and the pool has never been resurfaced, the area around it, and if you really maintain a pool, it's every 10 years. There was no fence when I moved there, and we've had a terrible time. When the fence rots now, they don't want to fix it. The gate doesn't work. I mean, they finally did it. They did make it more accessible, the jacuzzi, by putting two bars. Okay. Anyway, who made your carpet? Because it's gorgeous.
Oh, I'm not sure. I actually knew we were going to be doing it, and then I didn't even see it until this evening. Thank you, Marlene. Okay, I would like to make a comment. So first of all, the city council is very sympathetic to all of the things that have been brought up this evening. It's not on the agenda, so we can't address any speaker's specific comments. Staff, I'd like to direct staff, because I think I can do that, for you to check into the allegations that have been brought up this evening, and that we, as a city, will do all we can to help our residents. There is a rent control ordinance that was voted in by the residents of San Marcos, and we can't just arbitrarily make changes to that ordinance. I did want to bring that up. And then, anyway, we will be getting back to you. So I just wanted to let you all know that. But we are definitely sympathetic to all the things that have been brought up this evening. Thank you. We will be moving on to item number 10, Resolutions, New Business, Resolutions Number 2023-9252 and 2023-9253, Adopt Part-Time and Full-Time Classification and COP Studies. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a report, not a presentation, so I'll be brief. Compensation schedules for public agencies are required to be approved by the governing body and be publicly available. So this evening, we're going to bring before you both the part-time and full-time classification and compensation schedule. For the part-time classification schedule, we will be increasing the bottom tier of the schedule to accommodate the minimum wage change. Minimum wage is increasing from $15.50 to $16 on January 1, 2024. We're also adding a part-time classification for a new aquatics maintenance position, so that is included in the part-time schedule. We are bringing before you the full-time compensation schedule. Executive compensation does need to be publicly available as well, and our executive compensation ranges from $122,756 annually to a maximum of $293,129 annually. We're also including one additional new position in the executive compensation structure. That is a strategic communications director position. As part of council's directive to conduct best value analyses for all of our lines of business, we took a look at a 10-year history for the communications budget, and we noticed that the budget had been increasing significantly in recent years. That increase is tied to the decision we made to outsource the position, which at the time was the fiscally responsible decision because it was less expensive. However, over time, as that contract cost has increased, we ran the analysis and have determined that bringing a full-time in-house position back to the city, we previously had this as a full-time position with the city, it's going to end up saving us money. So that is our recommendation this evening, and that is why we have brought before you both the full-time and part-time compensation schedules.
Okay. Any discussion among the council? I would say the best value is us. $11,732 a year.
What was that monthly rate, Michelle? I'm sorry, for the city council?
The city council, I have the annual amount, and if you're going to make me divide that by 12...
$11,732, best value in the whole city.
It's best value.
It is.
Yes. Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Item number 11, Restaurant Row Specific Plan Mitigated Negative Declaration, 23011. Specific Plan, 22-0004. General Plan Amendment, 22-0002. Rezone, 22-2, sorry, 0002. Tentative Subdivision Map, 22-0003. Site Development Plans, 22-0006, and Private Site Development Plan, 23-0004. And you guys should be ready to go, since I draw that out for you, so you can take your seats and get ready to go.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jones, and council members. Sean Del Soler will be conducting the presentation tonight. We also have Isaac here, who will be going over the engineering land development component of the project.
All right. Thank you very much. Before you now is a request for approval of the Restaurant Row Specific Plan project that proposes 202 residential units, 10,400 square feet of commercial, a 1.1-acre park, and street improvements to San Marcos Boulevard. This requires the aforementioned entitlements. The project site's located at 1020 West San Marcos Boulevard between Las Poses Road and Villa Ver Cruz. The project encompasses a 10.5-acre project site on the western side of the Old California Restaurant Row site. Existing light industrial development is located to the northwest and north of the project site. Offices are located to the northeast of the project site, and going clockwise order from there, several key establishments are Fish House, Ver Cruz, Casino del Charo, Wells Fargo Bank, Buffalo Wild Wings, the former Sears site, and the movie theater. The general plan in rezone designation, excuse me, the general plan land use and zoning designation of the northern parcel of the project site is light industrial, while the two southern parcels are designated as mixed-use one, which allows commercial and residential development of up to 20 to 30 dwelling units per acre. The project site is situated within a larger mixed-use one zone area on the north side of San Marcos Boulevard. This zone was established in 2012 as part of the general plan update, with the objective to reflect the architectural style of San Marcos, the San Marcos Creek District's specific plan area to the south, and provide a cohesive development pattern along the San Marcos Boulevard corridor. The general plan amendment, excuse me, the project proposes to change the general plan land use and zoning designations of the project site to specific plan area to implement the Restaurant Row Specific Plan. As part of the general plan land use change, fiscal and economic studies were prepared for the project to examine the development of the project site consistent with the existing zoning designation, which is referred to as the approved plan, and the proposed plan referred to as the, excuse me, and the proposed project referred to as the proposed plan. For the purposes of the study, a conceptual project was developed for analysis under the approved plan and consisted of a 1.63-acre light industrial development on the northern parcel that consisted of 28,436-square-foot office building, and an 8.89-acre mixed-use one development on the southern parcels, containing 173 residential units and 10,400 square feet of commercial. And the proposed project, again for reference, is 202 residential units with 10,400 square feet of commercial. The fiscal study prepared for the project determined the development of the proposed project would result in an estimated reoccurring fiscal surplus to the city's general fund of approximately $10,000 a year, more than development of the site with the approved plan for office and mixed use on the project site. The economic study prepared for the project analyzed the potential changes in direct and indirect economic outputs of both the approved and proposed plans. The study determined that construction development of the approved plan would have a one-time economic output of $60 million, whereas the proposed plan would have an output of $57 million. The slight reduction in economic output is the result of a smaller construction workforce anticipated from the proposed plan versus the approved plan. The study also examined the reoccurring economic output of the plans and determined that the approved plan would have an estimated $21 million output, whereas the development of the proposed plan would be $5.7 million. The difference in economic output, again, is primarily the result of not developing the potential office building on the light industrial northern parcel of the project site, resulting in reduced levels of employment. The general plan amendment and rezone are required to implement the proposed Restaurant Row Specific Plan. The specific plan was created with the objective to revitalize Old California Restaurant Row, enhance the atmosphere and complement the surrounding businesses, provide onsite entertainment and recreational opportunities, and address community needs with mixed-use housing. The specific plan is based on the development standards of the mixed-use one zone, with adaptations tailored to the characteristics of the project site. This approach ensures compatibility with future development of the mixed-use one in the vicinity of the project area. The specific plan also establishes a form-based code to ensure the architectural design scale and character of the project site is consistent with the approved specific plan, and also limits density to 20 to 30 dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the mixed-use zone one density. As proposed, the project will have a density of 21.7 acres, dwelling units per acre. The design of the project consists of 20 buildings with 202 residential units, 10,000 square feet of commercial distributed in three nodes throughout the project site, a 1.1-acre neighborhood park located near the center of the site, four private recreation amenities, and a three-quarter-mile network of paseos providing north-south, east-west connections within the project site and to off-site businesses and restaurants, as well as connecting the park to San Marcos Boulevard. The project will include three different building types with variations in both size and architectural style. The green court buildings will be primarily located around the park and open space areas of the project. It will consist of 10 buildings with 57 residential units. The motor court buildings will be located within the interior of the site, framing the paseos that will pass between the buildings, and includes six buildings with 120 residential units. And finally, the mixed-use buildings will be located along the periphery of the site, fronting both San Marcos Boulevard and the remaining portion of Old California Restaurant Row, and will include Row, and will include four buildings with twenty-five residential units and all three commercial nodes proposed by the project. This is the elevation of the mixed-use buildings fronting San Marcos Boulevard. These buildings will include two types of residential units, seventeen street row town homes, as seen to the left, with ground for living area, and eight town-over-commercial homes over the commercial units, as seen to the right. Units in these buildings will have third-floor balconies, front porches separating public and private spaces, and include Old California Restaurant Row-inspired architectural features, including brick veneer and wood facade finishes. Town homes, town home units over commercial will also have a second-floor covered terraces further buffering the residential units from the commercial uses below by a physical separation. A commercial node will be located at the center of the mixed-use building on San Marcos Boulevard, centered around a courtyard that is anchored by a wood tower feature created from reclaimed timber from the existing Restaurant Row structures, and provide an entrance to the main north-south paseo connecting San Marcos Boulevard to the public park and parking. Commercial facades will have a solid appearance with large glass windows to distinguish them from the residential portions of the building. The courtyard commercial node, as well as the other two nodes, will each be approximately three thousand square feet in total. The commercial tenant space is located under the residential units and will surround the garages of the residential unit above. Due to the mixed-use nature of the development, trash enclosures, utilities, and service corridors will be located within unoccupied areas of the commercial floor area, further reducing the public areas of commercial tenant spaces. An acre tenant space will, at the corner of the shared driveway with the remaining portion of Restaurant Row, will be a highly visible landmark of the development and prominently shape the character and new San Marcos Boulevard streetscape. This tenant space will include floor-to-ceiling glass windows, a butterfly-style roof, and outdoor dining. Another acre tenant space will be located to the northeast corner of the project site, adjacent to the park and existing Restaurant Row businesses. This node will incorporate additional wood facade features, and is strategically cited to activate the neighborhood park with features such as a roll-up door to facilitate an inside and outside commercial floor plan that overlooks the park, large glass windows to provide a transparent edge to the project, enhancing the visual connection between Restaurant Row and the park. And this node is also intended to complement the existing Restaurant Row businesses by attracting people further into the site from Restaurant, excuse me, from San Marcos Boulevard or the neighborhood park. The green court and motor court buildings will be located interior to the site and have limited visibility from San Marcos Boulevard and Restaurant Row. Consistent with the mixed-used buildings, the residential buildings will be three stories in height and feature contemporary architecture style with flat roofs. Building facades will include a variety of materials, including stucco, brick, and cement, board, faux wood siding. As seen in the rendering, the units will have architectural features that break up building planes, vary building heights, and provide depth to the elevations. Garages will be in the rear of the units, separating vehicle and pedestrian spaces in the project. Balconies and the continuation of architectural features from the front will provide visual entrance to the rear elevations and enhance the overall appearance of the private driveways. The inclusion of an alternative earth-tone color scheme will provide additional colors to further vary the appearances of buildings, which will also range in size from four to eighteen, or four to eight attached units. This is a view of the rear elevation of a longer six-unit building. Residential parking requirements in the specific plan are consistent with those of the mixed-use zone. For the residential component of the project, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight spaces are required, and the project will provide four-hundred-and-one spaces, primarily in private garages. Open parking spaces will provide guest, park, and commercial parking. Ninety-nine spaces are required, and the project will provide one hundred and seventeen open parking spaces onsite. In total, the project is required to provide four-hundred-and-seventy-seven onsite parking spaces and will provide five-hundred-and-eighteen spaces exceeding the requirements. The five-hundred-and-eighteen spaces provided onsite are distributed as follows. The one hundred and seventeen open parking spaces are distributed throughout the interior of the perimeter of the site. The four-hundred-and-one residential parking spaces will occupy the majority of the ground level of the buildings. And paseos throughout the site will connect parking areas to residences, commercial nodes, and off-site businesses, including a future connection to the movie theater site, which shares its parking with the project site, Casino del Charo, and Buffalo Wild Wings. Parking is shared between the project site and surrounding properties through three different parking agreements, which share parking on a non-exclusive basis. These non-exclusive agreements were accepted by the city to satisfy parking requirements at the time buildings were constructed. However, all agreements are private and not regulated by the city. The project has also demonstrated compliance with the terms of each of the agreements and will continue to be bound by their terms unless ended through mutual agreement of the private parties. The first of the three agreements is from nineteen eighty-nine and requires that Fish House Ver Cruz make fifty-four parking spaces available to Old California Restaurant Row, which includes the project site and the Casino del Charo Buffalo Wild Wings parcels. A nineteen ninety agreement requires that Old California Restaurant Row make thirty-six parking spaces available to Fish House Ver Cruz. And a nineteen ninety-six agreement created to implement a shared parking conditional use permit when the movie theater was constructed shares all open parking spaces among the movie theater project site, one of the office buildings, the remaining Old California Restaurant Row parcel, Wells Fargo Bank, and this agreement does not include the Fish House Ver Cruz Although the nineteen ninety-six agreement does not specify shared parking quantities, it does identify that all onsite parking spaces on each parcel of the agreement are shared. Not including the project, one thousand forty-one parking spaces are shared, and once completed, all one hundred and seventeen open parking spaces of the project will be shared for a total of one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces available to the parties of that nineteen ninety-six agreement. After the planning commission meeting, the applicant modified the design of the project to respond to comments received at that hearing. Originally, the project provided five-hundred-and-one onsite parking spaces and was modified to add seventeen spaces to the west and east sides of the park. Additionally, twenty-five off-site parking spaces were added to the project, with thirteen of those being located along the local access lane on San Marcos Boulevard, and twelve spaces added to the Casino del Charo property under a private agreement. Collectively, forty-two parking spaces were added to the project to provide a total of five-hundred-and-forty-three parking spaces on and off-site. A FEMA special flood hazard area exists on the site, bisecting it and limiting development within that area. The general plan identifies a park site within that area, and the project proposes an approximately one-acre neighborhood park proposed within that special flood hazard area. The park will not obstruct the flow of water within that floodway, not impact adjacent properties, and not increase flood elevations. A series of public workshops were conducted for the park design, and a strong community demand was identified for pickleball and skate park facility. An additional design charrette for the park gave residents an opportunity to design the park with the desired recreational amenities in the preferred locations, which guided the final design of the park. The public park design will include a multi-purpose all-wheel plaza to serve bikes, skateboards, and scooters, a central lawn area with seating, shaded picnic area, pickleball courts, playground with shade structures and seating, a public restroom, and a raised platform with amphitheater-type As previously mentioned, parking spaces were added to the west and east sides of the park in the areas identified. To accommodate the parking spaces, the park side was, park size was reduced by point-oh-five acres, with recreational amenities shifted inward, however, none were lost. The spaces added are located adjacent to Fish House Ver Cruz and Casino del Charo and provide the additional parking that is also available to those businesses. Private open space for the project. A total of one-point-two acres of private open space is included in the project. Half-acre of private open space is also included in the project, comprised of porches and balconies. Two-hundred-and-forty-three trees are proposed, four private recreational amenities are provided onsite, and will include a dog park, a small dog park, community gathering area with outdoor cooking facilities, tables, and percolum, and a park connector with an HOA main town, HOA-maintained playground and connect, and connect the paseos to the neighborhood The paseos throughout the project site will open up to seating area nodes, providing a comfortable place for residents to gather, as seen in the rendering.
The project proposes a vesting tentative subdivision map. The map will be comprised of three lots. They are depicted in red, outlined in the exhibit in front of you. Those condominiums that will be placed on lots two and three include two-hundred-and-two residential lots, and there will be ten thousand four hundred square feet of commercial space that can be divided into as many as thirty commercial condominiums. Lots two and three will have HOAs established for the oversight and management of the commercial and residential condos, and existing access along private drive G, along with other needed easements, will remain for the benefit of access and utility services. This project is required to widen San Marcos Boulevard along its frontage. The widening, widening will establish the improvements as identified in the city's general plan, creating an act, a local access lane. This local access lane will place traffic that will be accessing the project outside of the main travel lanes of San Marcos Boulevard. This will provide multiple operational improvements, chiefly reducing, slowing, or stopping vehicles that you commonly see when entering the site. To demonstrate, we have a quick animation of how this works. You'll follow the little vehicle on the right-hand side of the screen. Progresses through and goes to the end. With that transition occurring over by Buffalo Wild Wings, it allows for vehicles to enter the local access lane and enter into one of the two proposed driveways into the site. And then the vehicles can exit the local access lane on the other end. As part of these improvements, the center median will also be modified to remove the left turn into the site shown there in the blue circle. And then for transit riders, their bus shelter will be installed in front of the Wells Fargo The San Marcos Boulevard improvements could include either buffered bike lanes on the street, or on-street parking as an alternative. The existing median to the left of the image will be preserved and modified as previously mentioned. Removing lefts into the site and improving functionality and reducing conflict points on San Marcos Boulevard is, is a helpful improvement in that area. The existing two lanes of traffic will remain, and a new landscape median will be installed to separate the local access lane. The local access lane will provide for vehicles, parking, bikes, and a walkable pedestrian frontage, as shown. Points of access to the site will be largely unchanged, with access from San Marcos Boulevard and Villa Ver Cruz. Both San Marcos Boulevard driveways will be right-in and right-out only. The westerly driveway of San Marcos Boulevard at drive A provides dedicated access to the site and public easement access to the park. The eastern driveway realigns, and the existing entrance that services the project site and adjacent uses can be used more directly. The existing driveway at Villa Ver Cruz will continue to allow full turning movements into and out of the site. Together, these driveways will see a reduction of trips from the currently approved use as a result of overall reduction of average daily trips. And as we look into these trips in transportation analysis, we see that level of service, which quantifies, quantifies the quality of service of roadways and generally ranges from a level of service A to a level of service F, and decreasing quality, with the primary factor being ADT, or average daily trips. We looked at potential LOS impacts and analyzed for conformance with the general plan. Restaurant Row is an existing development with a trip generation rate of six-thousand-three-hundred-forty-eight. The proposed project, with the three uses as shown, would result in one thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-three average daily trips, and so resulting in overall reduction of four thousand six-hundred-and-sixty-five ADT. Basically, that would improve the overall operations in the surrounding roadways.
In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. The M and D identified impacts and mitigation measures for biology, which were potential impacts by construction activities to nesting birds, requiring a nesting bird survey before those activities occur onsite. Similarly, cultural and tribal resources could be also impacted by those ground-disarming activities associated with construction and grading. This required tribal monitoring of such activities as a result of tribal consultation. And public services were also identified as impacted in that the development of the project site will contribute an incremental amount of cumulative impacts to the city's services for police, fire, paramedic, and congestion management, requiring the annexation to community facilities districts to mitigate those impacts. As Isaac mentioned, transportation impacts were less insignificant, and the vehicle miles traveled were reduced by fifty-six percent, and average daily trips were also reduced. Mitigation measures were included to address all the aforementioned impacts. The M and D was circulated for a thirty-day period from August twenty-first to September twentieth, and seven comments were received. A full response to the comments was included in the M and D's technical appendix Q. However, the following is a summary of those comments and responses. Relating to the historic structural concerns, a built environmental, excuse me, a built environment and historical research memorandum, and a supplemental historic research technical report were prepared for the project and concluded the property, the property is not a historical resource under SEQA, lacking historical associations, architectural merit, and integrity. The findings do not alter the impact of significance in the draft M and D. Parking concerns. Parking has a social impact, and SEQA does not evaluate the adequacy of parking as an environmental impact. As far as vehicle miles traveled and traffic concerns were relayed to us, again, VMT was reduced, and average daily trips were also reduced. Some comments were received regarding noise impacts. Noise study, the noise study prepared for the project demonstrates compliance with the noise ordinance, and construction of a six-foot block wall in two adjacent industrial properties also assists with sound attenuation. A total of three public workshops were conducted on December first, twenty-twenty-two, to provide an introduction to the project and park. Park design charrette on January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three occurred, and a final project design open house occurred on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. In addition, the applicant implemented a public outreach program for the project that included attending community events, maintaining a project website, and conducting meetings with stakeholders. Approximately twenty-three comment letters were received, and all letters were included in the agenda packet and provided generally positive feedback on the project. Following the planning commission meeting, the following actions occurred to address the comments on the project. As previously discussed, forty-two parking spaces were added on and off-site. The park site was reduced to accommodate additional parking spaces, however, no amenities were impacted or removed by that additional parking. Lenora and Casino del Charo also reached an agreement that adds twelve spaces to their site, implements a two-hour time restriction on the Casino del Charo parking spaces on their property. their property, and also a mutually agreed upon location of employee parking was also reached. Ongoing discussions between the applicant and Fish House Veracruz occurred, and the applicant can provide additional information on the status of those discussions. As a summary, the project adds 202 housing units to the city's inventory. It is consistent with the goals and policies of the general plan, in that the project implements smart growth concepts, includes development of a park in a designated area for one, and the specific land preserves consistency with the mixed-use one zone. The project will include the 1.1 acre neighborhood park with desired amenities identified by the public. Generates less traffic than the commercial development, vehicle miles traveled are fifty-six percent lower than the existing commercial development, exceeds the onsite parking requirements by forty-one spaces, adds twelve spaces to the Casino Del Charo property, and thirteen on-street parking spaces. This concludes staff's presentation, Lennar has also prepared a presentation to provide to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff, or do you, did you want to wait until after the applicant? Or no?
Yeah, I'd like to wait, mayor.
Okay.
But I did want to get my microphone on. I wanted to just disclose for the, for the record that I was contacted by the ownership of Casino Del Charo, Stoney Monforte and his family, and I met with them at their request and had a conversation about the project, and I also met with Alex Plishner and Ryan Green from Lennar at their request and also discussed the project with them.
Okay. Okay.
Likewise, I met with Story and Fernando Monforte, Alex Plishner, and Ryan Green, and Mr. Green, can you confirm that the Tony Hawk Foundation is a party to the park? Okay, thank you. Andre Taylor was in the slide presentation, I recognize him, he's a family friend, so I want to make that declaration also. Thank you.
I've been contacted via text message by all parties, actually, and I have met with Lennar as well. Deputy Nira?
Yes. Had to go back and write this down after Helen reminded us. I met with the applicant Alex Plishner and Ryan Green probably, I'm guessing, maybe two and a half years ago, when the project was first floating around the community. I met on the October twenty-third with Story and Fernando Monforte at Casino. And then I met again with Alex and Ryan on November twenty-seventh after the planning commission meeting, and then I met again with them on December seventh. I think that covers everything she told us to do.
And I met with the applicant prior to today. Okay. Did you say you had a question or no, were you going to wait?
Yeah, I have some questions and comments, but I'm gonna wait till the end.
Okay, all right, then let's have the applicant with their presentation, please.
Good evening. Make sure this thing works here. All right, already messed it up. Anybody? Oh, well, there we go. Got it figured out. Good evening, my name is Ryan Green, I'm the division president for Lennar Homes San Diego. I want to thank the city council, I want to thank the mayor and staff for bringing this property forward. So we had several project objectives when we put this property together, they're listed up here on the screen and the screen in front of you as well. The one that rings out to me the most is the first bullet that talks about the place that recaptures the fun, the connection, the celebration of people we love and the people we know. That one rang true to me, it was a little bit more personal. As a member of the San Marcos community for nearly twenty-two years, one of the first places I went to when I came to San Marcos, one of my first dates with my wife, was at Tony Roma's, when it was back behind the old California Mining Company. We went to the retail center before it was removed, we went to the steak and wine shop, we've been to Sublime, we've been to all those places. The reason I'm telling you this is it's been part of our family, part of our identity, and part of the community that we've been a part of in San Marcos for the last twenty years. As the city staff pointed out, we had several community outreach meetings, we met with, we had our parks meetings, we had our community engagement meetings, we had our stakeholder meetings, really with the goal of trying to figure out what it is that the community wants to see preserved, and what the community wants to see improved, and what they're asking, what they're expecting of us. And there were four real topics that came out of it. First and foremost was the preservation of the legacy of Old California Restaurant Row. Also, it was parking. Parking is, I mean, doesn't matter what property we're talking about, parking will always be at the centerpiece, so will traffic, and so will what are the community benefits that we're giving back to the community. As far as the planning commission, I pride myself on being able to understand what it is that we're doing and what we're building for the community, and how we're putting together the elements, the components of a plan and a residential community, and I think knowing what's gonna happen. We were floored by the outcome that occurred at planning commission. And what was most saddened us and most surprised us about it is that really the merits of the project itself, the design, the aesthetics, the park engagement, the activation of the commercial centers, both old and new, those things all resonated with the planning commissioners. They said very positive things about it, things that I rarely get to hear when I'm at the dais. What they really focused on were three major, major tenants. One was the shared parking agreements, and just that we were attending to them and that we were complying with those agreements. Two was, it's just the overall parking, there was concerns that there wasn't sufficient parking and that, that we hadn't accommodated enough, and we just probably did a poor job of explaining our story. And the other part was, is they felt as though we had failed our neighbors by not engaging them earlier and more often. So we went back, and we listened to what the planning commission said, and when we go through this presentation, you're gonna see each one of those has been addressed. So first and foremost, parking. City staff mentioned it before, we heard what the commissioner said, specifically Commissioner Floating said, why can't you add more parking in that park area? So went back, we looked at it, and we said, we can get seventeen more stalls without compromising the integrity, without compromising the programming or the intent of what that park was supposed to be and will be. Another point is that all of our parking that we need is contained within the boundaries of our property. We don't need any of the parking that comes within the shared parking agreements. It's an added benefit for all of us, but in the end, all of our parking requirements are satisfied within the boundaries of our property. We also went and studied or surveyed, I think is a more appropriate way to say it. We went and surveyed the, the uses that were existing, we said, what is really, when are their peak hours, when does, when's the parking most consumed? And so we looked at all three of the active businesses, and we found out that on Fridays at 6:00 PM, that is when they really, that's when they really fill up. And they end up having about two hundred, or about a hundred and ninety-nine stalls in total, out of the two hundred and twenty-nine stalls that are provided. And that's before the seventeen stalls that we've reintroduced, and before the twelve stalls that we're gonna work with Story and his family on, on repaving and restriping his center to add a total of twenty-nine more stalls. In addition, working with the city, we have the thirteen additional stalls that will be on the, on San Marcos Boulevard. So we looked at the parking, we made sure that we had accommodated all the things that the planning commissioners wanted us to look at, which was bring more parking, make sure that we have, that our businesses have the security to be able to operate. And that's what you'll see here, the thirteen stalls on the bottom, the twelve stalls with Story and his family at Casino Del Charo, and the seventeen stalls that are immediately to the, adjacent to the park. The shared parking agreements, this is, this is a very difficult one, I think that Sean did a very good job of outlining how they work, but I think the most important piece of it is that these are private agreements between private parties. The agreements do not specify what stalls are for who, they're for the shared collective. Specifically, they are non-exclusive easements. So we all get the benefit of those, and that's what those, those agreements memorialize. The project, as I stated before, our project is not reliant on the parking of the shared agreements, and we do adhere to all the provisions of the parking agreements. All in, there's a total of twelve hundred and twelve stalls when you include the Edwards Theater, the seventeen additional stalls we're adding, the twelve stalls that Casino Del Charo is gonna add, as well as the thirteen stalls that we have on the frontage. Community character, so I think that Sean talked a little bit about this. The zoning currently allows for up to 255 homes based on the zoning allowances that are there, I think it's twenty to thirty, I'd have to double-check the number, but 255 homes in total on the residential portion, as well as up to thirty-nine thousand square feet of industrial property. When we first proposed the community, the project to the community, it was two, over 220 homes, no commercial, no, nothing else. After several meetings with city staff, several meetings with the community, we ultimately created the project that's here before you today, that's those 202 residential units with, and 10,400 square feet of commercial, neighborhood-serving, commercial, mixed-use components. Legacy, boy, did we step into that one. We had to learn the hard way very quickly that we were not doing what we were supposed to do. Frankly, for me as a residential builder, it was a massive paradigm shift. It's not something that I'm used to, I go in and I look at a piece of property, how can I build up? But what I had to really look at is look at the inside, and what can I take from that, and what can I reintroduce back, not just to our neighborhood that we're gonna do, but back to San Marcos as a whole. So there were several elements that we identified in there, and we came up with a program that we call reimagine, repurpose, reinterpret, and recycle, and we're looking at all these. So you have all these very large timbers, beams, that are throughout the buildings. We're gonna take those and we're gonna get with the high school, every one of these things I'm telling you about is already programmed. We're gonna take these, get with the high school, and we're gonna put together a competition and find out who can build the best furniture that we can put into our parks. We're gonna look at the timbers also and say, what can we put inside our private parks to reintroduce those into there? Same thing with the timbers, using them for the shade structures. And the one I'm most proud of, which you'll see here in a little bit, is we found a way to frame the entry to the paseo that comes off of San Marcos Boulevard, almost inviting you to come in and walk through and get into the paseo and get over to the park, possibly go over to the commercial area, grab a piece of pizza, maybe an iced tea, and watch someone play pickleball. So it's a spectacular piece of our, our design. The rocks, they are throughout the buildings, so we're going to find a ways to introduce those into the gabion walls. We also have the bricks that you saw that Sean mentioned on the facade of our buildings, and then you also have the, the tiles that we believe Mr. Eubanks brought in and tiled himself. We're gonna try to find a way to, to replicate or emulate those and put those throughout the buildings as we go through and through the paseos. The bells, we've heard about the bells several times from several people, it's super important to everybody. So what our plan was and currently is, is to try to find a way to create a sensory piece of art within the parks themselves, but really what, we took a pause on that one, we're gonna be getting with the historical society and make sure that not only are we doing something that preserves those bells, but also something that stays in a place that lasts forever. If it's in the park, we just want to make sure that it's gonna be timeless and not lost. We're gonna end up bringing in art in public spaces specifically around our trash enclosures for the commercial businesses. And then the last piece, which I'm really, piece I'm excited about, we're gonna take QR codes, and we're gonna put them in different places around the parks and inside the paseos, and we're gonna work with the historical society to come up with videos and video, and photo montages that will tell a story and remind people of what was here, and what an icon it was for not just San Marcos, but for North County. This is an image of the architecture that we currently have proposed. When we first put together our designs, it was a very contemporary, very clean style, something that actually I was really, really proud of, we hadn't gone that way before. Through that paradigm shift, through that mind melding with the community, we learned how to reintroduce pieces and elements that would not compromise the integrity of the architecture, but actually would elevate it, no pun intended, would make it much better. And frankly, what we have now is better than we can even conceived at the beginning. So you see in there, as you've got the brick that is an homage to the Restaurant Row, those beams are all gonna come out of the buildings, and we're gonna, we're gonna engineer those up so it frames that, that paseo as people are either going to the coffee shop or the donut shop, or on their way to the park. Traffic and circulation, I think the city did a very good job of explaining this, that the benefits of the project mobility features are that this, the implementation of San Marcos, is the implementation of the San Marcos Boulevard mobility plan element, and that this multiway ultimately increases the capacity of San Marcos Boulevard and allows for greater traffic flow. The one thing I'm most proud of, and I rarely, very rarely get to say, is that our proposed project will generate fewer trips than the uses that existed the day we tied up the property. That's, for us, that's a shock, I mean, we had to do the math a few times to make sure we were right, but ultimately, we were, we were down below that, which is wonderful. Also, the intersection at San Marcos Boulevard and via Veracruz should be approximately sixteen percent less wait time than what, than exists today. This is an image here of showing you where the multiway is set up with the additional parking. Also, you have the, the through traffic on the, that's a little bit closer to us, and that's an image of our architecture for the commercial area that sits adjacent to the few, to the existing Buffalo Wild Wings.
I have one quick question on that, sorry to interrupt. Is that going to be limited parking as far as time-wise, or what, what's that going to look like?
That is something that we have to work out with the city, we have not decided. We just, just got the, came up the decision to put the thirteen stalls in there probably about three weeks ago or so.
Just kind of looking at that, we might consider making it limited time so that those shops can really, but I'll just throw that out there, whatever, whatever you guys come up with, I'm sure.
In the same vein, Ryan, have you considered the design on that, are they going to be parallel, are they going to be diagonal?
The, the design currently is shown as parallel, not diagonal.
And one side or the other or both sides? There's enough.
Only on one side, only on the retail-facing side.
Okay, thank you.
The pedestrian connectivity, that was something else we had to be really thoughtful about because you have the existing approved Sears residential property. Also, we want to make sure that we really engage and activate people from the street on San Marcos Boulevard, and invite them in and pull them into the park. And so we were, we have the paseos that run north-south, we have the ones that run east-west, and then we have the additional pedestrian connections that come through the street and get over to the parks and the play areas and the restaurants. I think that we mentioned the 10,400 square feet of dining, you have the four different properties that are in that area, you have the two that front on San Marcos Boulevard, the one that bunts both for San Marcos Boulevard and the entry near Buffalo Wild Wings, and sort of the crown jewel, which is the one that's gonna sit off of the park and also face and hopefully activate off of the existing restaurant businesses adjacent to us. I am very happy to say that we have Erin in here, so I'm not gonna steal any of her thunder, but we have reserved a spot for her, it's taken us a long time to work out all the nuances, but ultimately, we've got a spot for her, so when we think of legacy and all the elements that we reintroduced back into the community, I consider that to be one of them as well. She's gonna be a great addition to us, and I frankly, I think she's a very much a key fabric of, of our community. Dining and retail, so historically, we stay away from trying to tire, work with brokers this far in advance, just it doesn't, usually doesn't make sense, but we know it was super important to the, to the community to know what type of businesses we're gonna go there. While we haven't identified the businesses other than Ascend, what we have done is try to find the right partner that understands what we're trying to accomplish in here. And those goals are, we want local, we want organic, we want eccentric, we want something that's exciting, something that's gonna activate those areas, that's gonna pull people in to want to come there and say, hey, I want to be a part of this community, I want to be able to have a beer, a soda, coffee, whatever it is, because this is gonna be a fun place. And the group that we're working with, Location Matters, is just that group, this is the, this is what they're, they're best at. This is an image here showing you the corner that's adjacent to the park, I mentioned it before, be a great place for you to come in, play a little pickleball, when you're done, run in, grab a sandwich, grab a hamburger, iced tea, whatever it is, and enjoy the day in, in the wonderful world of San Diego's weather. Neighborhood park, we spent a lot of time on that one. And I think the city covered it very well, but I'll just reiterate, this is intended to be a multi-generational, multifaceted park. You've got the skate park, you've got the park with a small amphitheater where you can have picnics and small bands, you've got the tot lot, and then you also have the pickleball courts. It's kind of, it's got something for everyone, it's thirty-one flavors of parks, it's a wonderful, wonderful facility, and it's gonna be a great addition to the community. Here's an image of the, the pickleball courts and the tot lot overlooking towards the amphitheater. Here's the amphitheater looking towards the pickleball courts, and then here is the skate park. I've actually been told it's called something else, but I for the life of me cannot remember the name. So it's for anybody that has wheels and want to enjoy the day there. So in closing, I guess the highlights of this are, is that this, this community really celebrates the lifestyle and the nostalgia of what Old California Restaurant Row was, and elevates it to the next, to the next stage. It creates a lot of outdoor spaces that culminate and invite you into the new neighborhood park, it also introduces attainable housing, housing in the downtown core of San Marcos, and it's also has neighborhood-serving commercial, and it also supports the revitalization of San Marcos Boulevard, sort of the cornerstone of what's to be. Before I finish, I want to just end on one point, sort of where I started. The planning commission vote, I said, was a shock to us. The planning commission vote, I said, was a shock to us, and shame on us, shame on me, but I will say that we didn't rest on our laurels. We heard what they asked of us. We went back, we met with both the property owners in earnest, and found a way to get a phenomenal opportunity with Story, and I'm excited to be working with his family. We also looked at the shared agreements, and we are confident that we are all within our bounds, and we made sure all of our parking can be accommodated within our own site. And then lastly, they wanted more parking, we brought them more parking, we've got forty-two additional stalls added to the property. So with that, I'll end. I'll let you know I have all my team here to answer any questions, and I would like to, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all of the work that you've done. I, I really like a lot of the revitalization, some of your work in the legacy. I mean, it really is quite remarkable. I moved to San Marcos in nineteen-eighty-seven. You know, Restaurant Row had only been open, what, twelve years, I think? And, you know, it used to be just amazing, and, you know, I, for many years, I struggled with the Eubanks family, talking to them about, yeah, are you going to move forward with the restoration? I mean, there was so much that they had promised that they were going to do, but never actually happened. So I'm just, I'm, you know, it, it's honestly quite sad when I go over there now. I mean, I, I go to Ascend pretty often. I actually have her coffee delivered, so I'm really excited that she's going to be coming back and that you did, you, you did try to bring that historic part of what Restaurant Row was originally. And I, I just wanted to make that comment, and then we're, we're all going to probably have questions of you, but I just wanted to thank you on those efforts and, you know, the, I, I had read a, somewhere, I don't remember where, it was in one of the comment letters, oh, actually, I think it was one that came in today, that there was a gentleman that owns a business, and he said that he's going to be using some of the timbers. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I apologize. There's so many pieces. But yeah, we have a gentleman that's going to be using the timbers, he's, he's, that's what his, he does. He does restoration, uses old-world timbers and creates art pieces, furniture pieces, et cetera. But we also have, one of the people that Story worked with when he was in the prior building, did all the artwork that was on the beams in there. And so there, we're going to be reserving them, those beams, for them to be able to, I think they're going to be there, make fireplace surrounds or something along those lines, but we're going to save those for them as well. So the other, the other piece that we didn't really hit on is, we're going to take all these and we're going to put as many of them as we can out there. If we can't use them all, then we're going to make it available to the public. We've also got other groups that I didn't, wasn't able to share up there, down in Chula Vista and in San Marcos, that have said, we'll take those off your hands and we'll start to use them for some of the art pieces as well, or furniture pieces that they use. So we're going to do everything we can to really, really reuse as much of that property as we possibly can.
Great. Okay, we have several speakers. Do you guys want to ask a few questions, or should we get into the speakers and, and then go back to the questions? It's up to you guys. Let's go to the speakers. Sorry, there's three of us that say yes, so sorry, you guys are outnumbered.
I don't believe I commented.
Okay, moving on then to our speakers. Thank you. Starting out with Ray Stainback. Actually, I think it might have been Ray that said something about the timber.
It was.
Now that I, now that I saw your name again, it reminded me, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Ray Stainback. I own Palomar Institute of Cosmetology, your local beauty school. We were established at three-five-five Via Vera Cruz in February of nineteen-eighty-five. So in a couple of months, we'll be celebrating our thirty-ninth year as a proud business member of our great community. The reason I'm here tonight is because I was surprised to read about the planning commission's decision about Restaurant Row, read about it in the Coast News, and I felt come, compelled to come here and share my support for the project with you. I attended the multiple aforementioned community meetings, and I too have met with the project team. As a neighboring property owner, I am optimistic about what this project means for San Marcos for a few reasons. First of all, I like the fact that Lennar took our feedback from those meetings about preserving the look and the feel of Old California Restaurant Row. Not only Old California Restaurant Row, but when we built in nineteen-eighty-five, we were required to mirror that architecture in order to get approval to build. And so I appreciate how they're maintaining that Old California style, but yet paying homage to that history, but in kind of a new and modern way. I think it's really cool. And as an aside, I hope to re, remodel my building and mirror some of those same, same One of the big topics is about the parking, and I understand that, and I, I think Lennar has paid attention to these important topics. What I'm looking forward to is the new park, and I think that creating a mixed-use living environment will make for a less car-focused area. And if you've driven San Marcos Boulevard in the mornings or the afternoons, and I'm sure you all have, I'm, I'm certain you guys could appreciate that idea as well. Moreover, the current conditions at Restaurant Row are untenable. They are actually creating problems for nearby businesses. In briefs, the vacant buildings and the surrounding parking lot has become a canvas for graffiti taggers and an unofficial, and I would suggest dangerous skateboard park. Again, on the parking issue, in regard to parking, my larger concern is about the unpermitted RV parking slash campsite that currently exist. I drew, I drive through the site daily, and there are usually at least two, and I've seen up to seven RVs or similar vehicles, like refurbished school buses, that are using the lot as an unofficial KOA campground. Trash from that campground is being dumped around, and unfortunately, usually not even in the nearby businesses' dumpsters enclosures, which is creating additional health and safety All in all, I think this project will be good for our city. As they say, a rising tide lifts all boats. I think this project is a shining example of that, and the great ship that was once Old California Restaurant Row, it is in dire need for a refitting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next is John Butler, followed by Becky Garrett, and then Steve Kildue will follow after
Mayor, council members, I'm John Butler, along with my three brothers. We own the Fish House Veracruz property. We're talking a lot about history here today. We all know that Jim Eubanks started Restaurant Row in nineteen-seventy-eight. And my brother Rex and his wife Karen started Fish House Veracruz in Old California Restaurant Row with Jim Eubanks on December twenty-three of nineteen-seventy-nine. In fact, Tony Roma's happens to be where Fish House Veracruz used to be. We're here today because we have raised concerns regarding parking and specifically the easements that the city required of Jim Eubanks to get the boundary line adjustment for parcel A so we could purchase it, and then the additional parking that we had to provide off-site in order to have our building permit issued to us for parcel A. Certainly, the planning commission, when we had the hearing back on November sixth, raised a number of concerns. And I would acknowledge that the parking issue that I think we raised was a primary factor in their decision, but there were other issues that they did raise. The commission recommended, recommended against approval by a six-to-one vote. Your staff has prepared a number of resolutions that I've reviewed. What I'd like to comment on the required parking and the needed parking is that certainly, we all know that Restaurant Row went through the pandemic, as every other business in this community did, and it took, it had a significant impact on restaurants in this community. When Restaurant Row was purchased, shortly thereafter, the restaurants within the confines of Restaurant Row left when their leases were not renewed. So when you do a parking study in April of twenty-twenty-three and September of twenty-twenty-three, two years after, most of the businesses within the confines of Restaurant Row have shut down, yeah, you're going to see a decrease in parking demand. But the point I want to make is that I think based upon the record that we have today, based on the proposed findings contained within your resolution, they cannot be supported based on the record. And it is, continues to be our opinion, for the reasons I'm going to explain, that the approval of the project as designed, and specifically the location of the park in regards to our parking easements, does, in our view, is a taking of property without fair compensation. The nineteen-eighty-nine easement did reserve fifty-four spaces on parcel A when that was developed for the benefit of parcel B. But that easement expressly provides that it is not for the use of the general public, nor for any public purpose whatsoever. The nineteen-ninety easement that we had to put together in order to obtain our building permit, provided for reciprocal parking between Fish House Veracruz and Old California, and in addition, provided for designated thirty-six spaces, which were located west and adjacent to our property within the four, first four rows, nine spaces in each row. And the terms of that agreement specifically limit the use of those spaces to customers and invitees of Old California, as well as Fish House Veracruz, and then it also was for the employees of Fish House Veracruz, so that employees did not have to park on parcel A. What the resolutions do not address, and what the findings do not address, is that according to our easement, it provides expressly at page three of the nineteen-ninety easement that any change in the location of parking is prohibited if it substantially impairs the use of the parking spaces. Presently, the park, which is a public purpose, Madam Mayor, could I request some additional time?
Well, if I do that for you, then I have to do that for everyone. Did you prepare something for us regarding this?
I'm sure we've prepared a number of things in the past, and I'm sure they're there, but I apologize.
Okay, just since there was a change with, with, with the, okay, okay.
Right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, Becky Garrett, followed by Steve, Steve Kildue, and then Nancy April, in that
Good evening. My name is Becky Garrett. I live on Virginia Place in San Marcos, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the burgeoning San Marcos pickleball community. We understand that in considering a major project like the one you are deliberating, you have many, many elements to examine, and we are here only to discuss our portion, which is desperately needed pickleball courts. We appreciate Lennar's outreach to us and their responsiveness throughout this process. Currently, in all of San Marcos, there are a total of four dedicated public pickleball courts, and they must serve hundreds and hundreds of players. Our numbers are growing every day. Our San Marcos pickleball Facebook page has well over a thousand members. But on any given morning at Innovation Park, where we have our four courts, it is not uncommon to have more than forty players vying for sixteen spots. This is not a fad, it's not going away. Many of our newer players are in their twenties and their thirties, and we're discovering that this is a global phenomenon. We just met with a pickleball ambassador from Singapore who had just come from playing in Malaysia. There are pickleball cruises and tours, and currently, professional pickleball is packing venues across the country. We are here to stay, and we are sincerely hoping, we are begging for additional public pickleball facilities in our great city. Again, thank you to Lennar for considering our needs, and thank you to the council for the opportunity to be respectfully heard. Before I close, I want to give a huge shout-out to our friend and years-long supporter Buck Martin, and to wish you a fabulous retirement. Thank you, Buck. Thank you.
We weren't going to do that tonight, but that's okay, Becky. Okay, Steve Kildue will be next, followed by Nancy April, followed by Sierra Nevada. Oh, that's what it says.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Most of you know me well. Most of you know I've spent decades serving the city on various commissions and task forces, and so it brings, I bring that perspective of mixed-use and urban planning, and I bring that to share my both support and approval of this project. They have worked hard, and they have done an excellent job changing the face of Restaurant Row. Madam Mayor, you saw it early. I lived here years before it was built, and came down that two-lane road of Encinitas Boulevard when there was nothing but a chiropractic offer, office, the water district, and a food stand where Restaurant Row is. So it was a huge change to me, growing up, and now to watch it as it's, it's disappointing, it's sad. It was a place where I brought my family, it was a place we enjoyed, and I want that to be the case again. And I see in this project the opportunity to begin the urban renewal of that area with a mixed-use project that we started talking about even back in the early Creek days. So I hope you will consider those things that are best about the Lennar presentation and not get bogged down in those things that while they are important, shouldn't stop the potential that this project brings to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Nancy, Nancy April, followed by Sierra Nevada, and then Nicole Hess.
Good evening. My name is Nancy April, and in effort to respect everybody's time and not reiterate a lot of what has already been said, I'm promised to make this really short. But I am here tonight to share my support for Restaurant Row project. I live in San Marcos. In that time, I've watched the decline of Restaurant Row, and I truly believe that this new neighborhood will bring new life to our area. I like the fact that Lennar took the time to work with the community. I really see how the comments, and even the criticisms, were addressed through all their creative designing. creative designing. The park components, the added parking, there's a lot to like about this project. I also recognize that, you know, what worked back in the 60s doesn't necessarily work today. I support this project because it is a good compromise. I like the fact that we'll have new restaurants, places for people to hang out, new places for young families to live, and retirees who might want to be downsizing. This, San Marcos is a great community, and I know that we can keep it that way, a place where people want to stay and not move out. This is a win-win for everybody, and I'm asking City Council tonight to please approve this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Sierra Nevada, then Nicole Hess, followed by Eric Bruvold. Well, hello, Sierra. I was wondering who was going to come up when I called that name. Okay, you just couldn't be any cuter.
Hello, my name is Sierra Nevada. Thank you for allowing me to have a voice here tonight, and at 11 years old, this is a pretty big thing. I am looking forward to this project, mostly because of the park and all the restaurants. I love to play outside and roller skate and skateboard. I'm looking forward to walking my dog, too, and hopefully, hopefully dancing at the amphitheater nearby. So yes, I think you should vote yes.
Well, thank you. Yes. Okay, she just stole the show. We're boring. Nicole Hess, followed by Eric Bruvold, and then Steve Wilson will be next.
Hello, my name is Nicole. I lived in San Marcos for over 20 years. I definitely agree that we should bring new life to Restaurant Row. It's sad to watch it fall apart. So yeah, vote yes on this.
Thank you. And next.
I can't call Sierra, so, exactly. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. So like you, Mayor Jones, I think actually one of the first times I ever, back in the late 1980s, came up to San Marcos. I know I came up to play golf at Twin Oaks, and I know I also dined at Old Restaurant Row. But I thought about tonight, and what could I say and encourage you guys to think about in your discussions and deliberations? And it's really been why I've been talking to your economic development manager about Old Restaurant Row, probably since I first took that job. One of the biggest challenges that North County is going to have is that as we build out all the remaining green space and open space in our region, we're going to have to have investment dollars flow into our old commercial corridors. And there are peculiarities, we can talk about Prop 13, and I don't want to spend a long time getting into the weeds of California tax policy. But getting investment income to flow into those regions and those areas is really hard. Business owners, property owners oftentimes have incentives just to sit on that property forever. It actually works out well for them because their property taxes are so low. So the opportunity here to incent and to encourage and to catalyze investment on San Marcos Boulevard really makes this project much more just about Restaurant Row. It's about San Marcos Boulevard, Mission Boulevard, our other commercial corridors in North County. So I would really encourage you in your deliberations. I know parking's important, and I know how people get upset about it, but take the big-picture view. We've got an opportunity to catalyze that corridor, and it's a really important vote that you're going to be taking tonight, and I think really important for San Marcos' future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up will be Steve Wilson, followed by Rafael De Bianco, and then Story Montforte.
Mayor Jones and council, thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm Steve Wilson. I represent the Butler family and a number of their business endeavors. I've had the privilege of working with them on a number of matters involving Fish House Veracruz, going back over the years. I was also at the planning commission meeting. I was not shocked by what I heard because we had almost unanimous planning commission, each expressing different areas of concern about the project before you tonight. Ours, the parking issues involving Fish House, were only one of those, only one. We are not anti-project. The project, if done right, will be an asset to this community. I think that's pretty clear. We are opposed to being thrown under the bus, and this is what's happened here. Let me talk about the implementation of double standard in approval of the project. You've heard a very practiced, polished presentation tonight by Lennar. Hats off to them. They do a great job of presenting. However, behind the curtain, the way the game has been played is very, very different. We discovered a November 27 letter from their attorney, running 14 pages, which raised a number of arguments and a number of issues for the very first time. Did we, or my clients, receive a copy of that letter? Oh, no, we did not. And this is not the first time that we have not received copies of their correspondence. We had to dig it out of the agenda when the agenda was finally published. Did we have time to respond? Heck, no. So I stand here before you tonight, telling you that we are the parties who have tried to obey the instruction of the planning commission and meaningfully engage Lennar in a solution to this problem. Specifically, we have a December 5 letter, which we did send, which addressed a number of different ways of resolving the problems at hand. We also had a fresh appraisal prepared of the property, as-is, where-is, as a restaurant property, by CBRE. As a professional in the real estate law field, I find no flaw in the way this appraisal was done. Fish House essentially put its best foot forward here, and we have had no meaningful response to this appraisal. Instead, we have been asked for more and more information, which, in good faith, we're in the process of preparing and giving to Lennar, so we can keep our side of the street swept clean. The three proposals that we made, two of which involve the disappearance of the reciprocal easements, problem vanishes. The first alternative was the most radical, and it had to do with redesigning the park and pickleball courts and putting those things elsewhere on the project. The second was to purchase the land and the building pursuant to the appraisal we had prepared. Again, we've had no meaningful response to that. Earlier, Lennar offered what amounted to salvage value, basically discounting the property by the entire floodplain. The sensible way to approach it is to resell it as a restaurant property and recoup the money that you've invested in it, or just broker it through. They could do that. They don't want to talk about that. The third one is a lot line adjustment to incorporate within the Fish House parcel the 36 adjacent spaces immediately west, four rows of nine each. That could be done as well. What they have done is included 14 additional spaces for Cosina and us that barely touches the need. Briefly touching on what's in front of you right now, we extensively addressed the SEQA issues, the use of wrong standard in calculating traffic count. We went into great detail and careful detail on that. We have addressed the mischaracterization of the easements, which I think is a gross mischaracterization. These easements were there for patrons and guests. They were not there and specifically prohibited public use and public purpose utilization of those easements. There is no controversy about how these things got interpreted until just recently. Finally, the whole, I will wrap up. The whole pickleball issue was totally blown away until this November 27 letter, to which we had no opportunity to respond. I ask you, how are decisions made here in this city? And are you going to throw the locals under the bus for trying to do the right thing? I hope not.
Okay, moving on to Rafael De Bianco, followed by Story Montforte and Erin Harper.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just full disclosure, I do want to let you guys know I am an employee of Lennar, but I'm also a resident and of San Marcos and have been for several years. I've also rented in the area prior to my home ownership about three years ago. And simply put, I just love San Marcos, and I can't be more excited about the opportunity for us to be here and do this project. You know, in my time here in North County, I really have watched the decline of Restaurant Row. I still frequently have dined there, the restaurants, the mining company, the 50-yard line, so on and so forth. So it's hard to kind of see those places go, but with the inactivity that's going on at Sears, you can see that the property is becoming pretty blighted and decayed. You know, revitalization is a natural, and it's a progressive process. By doing so, too, it stimulates job creation. It improves the quality of life. It lifts the spirit of a community. It definitely lifts and raises the quality of the local schools, property values, and it strengthens our communities. You know, many of the commercial elements, too, along San Marcos Boulevard are fledgling. Some do very well, and some do very poorly. And adding some rooftops, you know, the commercial tends to follow the rooftops, not the other way around. You know, we hear, on a larger scale, we hear it every single day, you know, we are in a housing crisis here in California. Our county is faced with less housing to meet the demands. The demands keep going up. One of the gentlemen had mentioned about the, you know, the campsites, doesn't take, you know, not a lot of observation to see what's going on with our unsheltered and unhoused population. It is increasing. Anyone can walk down a few blocks east here on Mission Boulevard and down in Barham, and you can start to see that there's, you know, there's an increasing number of unhoused and unsheltered, and a lot of people living in their vans and RVs. As you can tell, the community is very well thought out. Being part of the company, I'm extremely proud of the design team and where this thing has gone. It really is a process that has started well over two years ago, and so it's not something that's been thrown together. It's been very well thought out. I'm proud of our company for keeping a lot of design elements. And I think it's cool, too, you know, a little bit like North City, we're bringing kind of an urban attainable project to the community that's going to marry both residential and commercial and rec, and really activate that corridor. It's about all I got, so I'm excited for it, and I hope you guys vote yes.
Thank you. Next is Story Montforte, Erin Harper, and then John Chokohi.
Mayor Jones, council, thanks for the time. My name is Story Montforte. I am one of the owners of Casino de Charro, along with my brothers. We own Casino de Charro Mexican restaurant. On behalf of my brothers, the many friends, family of Casino de Charro, I'd like to share my support in the redevelopment of Old California Restaurant Row. My brothers and I grew up in San Marcos. We were proud to be able to open our restaurant in 2017 in what was once a vibrant Restaurant Row. Over the years, we've gone through recessions, pandemics, everything in between. Somehow, together with our staff, we've always managed to pull through. This redevelopment wasn't what we had in mind when we first signed our lease in 2017. We've been very transparent with our concerns. We've been working with Lennar on many options on how to address parking in the area, and I'm happy to say we reached agreement that I believe improves both sites. We found working with Lennar to be a transparent process. We appreciate they took time to reach a mutual beneficial solution with us. Through conversations, we found ways to add additional parking spots. We've agreed to restripe the area immediately surrounding our restaurants, adding additional 12 spots, provide for limited limitations on parking hours around the restaurant facilities, so as to not allow residents or long-term parking in those areas, and only focus on commercial parking in those spots. We've also agreed that both employees of our business and employees of the commercial businesses on the Lennar side will have a identifiable employee parking area, so as to not impact the customer parking. We've also entered into a purchase agreement for the restaurant parcel, which will allow us to provide our services to the community for many years to come. I hope together we can move forward with the approval of this project and bring back the vitality of the entirety of Restaurant Row. We've been a longstanding member of this community. We're very optimistic about the future holds for our business and for San Marcos. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I actually have a question for you. On the parking, is it going, are you having signage? How is that, how is that going to be handled, being that you've come to an agreement?
For the two-hour zone parking is going to be signage that will adhere to the city code, and we've been working with staff on what that might look like.
Okay, so that's all going to have signage? And then the employee parking, I'm unclear as to how that's going to work?
Well, we've, because we have the use of the shared parking agreements, we will identify areas that the employees are not allowed to park, allowing the use of any of the other parking areas for employee parking.
Okay, so again, signage would be how that's going to be probably handled, I would assume.
I'm not sure if there'll be signage for that particular piece. It'll be more of us communicating with our employees around areas that they will allow to be able to park. I know on my side, that's easily handled by my employees, and I don't know all the legal constructs, but I know that there's both CCNRs and commercial terms that they can apply to the Lennar commercial leases.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thanks. Okay, next up is Erin Harper, followed by John Chokohi, I'm sorry if I said it wrong, and then Marlene Walder.
Good evening. My name is Erin Harper, and I'm the owner of Ascend Coffee Roasters in Restaurant Row, formerly Old California Coffee House. I'm here tonight to advocate for the people of San Marcos and the community that has supported my business and in favor of the proposed project by Lennar. For me personally, this is not an easy thing because I understand it means the loss of my business as I know it currently and a community connection, but I do believe that San Marcos deserves something better than deserted restaurants and a dark parking lot. We've been extremely blessed to still have life on our side of Restaurant Row between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. when Ascend is open for business, but that's truly a testament to the hard work of my team and the loyalty of our amazing customers, including a lot of you guys, so thank you. Over the past 10 years, we saw restaurants go out of business one by one. The owners of Restaurant Row closed the Village Shops and tore down the buildings behind us, promising us a reinvestment in the plaza, but a big brown fence went up and never came down. Restaurants have sat abandoned, and those of us left, working twice as hard to create a nice place for our customers. After the pandemic, when the news broke that the property had been sold, I must admit that I was a little hopeful, hopeful that someone would reinvest in the property and make it a destination again. We were all afraid, of course. Every day, I get to continue running my business. In Restaurant Row is a huge blessing. I know so many people here tonight because of that special place. But San Marcos residents deserve to have a nice center with things to do, good restaurants, and hopefully, an amazing community coffee shop, and the park that they've planned sounds incredible. Alex and Ryan with Lennar have made things very personal, reaching out to me to see how they can help and reworking plans when I told them what went it. They have listened to the community and incorporated pickleball courts and a skate park. The Row is a different concept than Restaurant Row, but they have shown us they understand that San Marcos wants a destination and that what, and they have heard what we want, and not just given us lip service, but real solutions. The community support and the support of all of our local officials has been truly special for my business. I love being in San Marcos. I learned all about business and started I learned all about business and started my first one here. And just all of you guys and the community and the people of San Marcos have made that experience so special for me. Something that we're going to strive to continue to be a part of in the future. And you'll be able to find us in Restaurant Row until the very last day that we are welcome there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is going to be John Chokohi. Marlene Walder, followed by Darren Levitt.
Good evening. My name is John Chokohi. I am here just to express my support for this project. I've followed it for quite a while now and was initially concerned about the parking issues. But I'm happy to hear that the developer has addressed those issues and made additional accommodations for parking. I think the new homes and everything that, you know, everyone's touched here, the improvements are going to be a great new addition to the city. So I hope you all vote yes. Thanks.
Thank you. Marlene Walder, followed by Darren Levitt, then Gary Levitt.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council Members. I want to, well, anyway, I was a park director many years ago. And before the park I was the director at, I was a child there. About every 20 years, we change what is our priority for parks and what we want out of them. Right now, you pick pickleball. Years ago, it was tennis. Years back, it was shuffleboard. And always the same thing has prevailed, parking. And I know there's, I don't know if it was 47 or 27 parking spaces. But if you have activities going on in your park with picnics and birthday parties and pickleball people, and yes, you can have 40 people waiting for three, four courts because there aren't enough. But there's never been enough of tennis courts either when we had tennis players. There's not enough parking right there. Also, for a person, I've been handicapped various times now. And I think the front where those spaces are not designated should be designated more as a drop-off for people to drop off who's ever in their car to go to the restaurant and not necessarily for parking there because it makes, when you have to park in the back and you have a handicapped person, it's a long walk. And it's a long walk for anything. I haven't heard anything about the parking for having E-cars, you know, electric cars being able to plug into underneath facilities. They have at least two parking spaces per condo. But technically, years ago, before pandemic, we had the theater. And when the theater opened up and a few times that I have gone to the theater, I've had to park in Restaurant Row to get to the theater because there was no parking. And if I ate at a restaurant there or those fast food type restaurants, there was no parking whenever I'd go because the people at the theater would park over there. And when I went to the city buildings for, they used to have city offices over there, weights and measure and tax office. And there'd be no parking and you'd have to go park in Restaurant Row. Restaurant Row, when I used to eat at Gentleman's Choice with my parents way back then, they wouldn't have parking in front of them. And it was a little place. I mean, they had a lot of people, but we'd have to park over by Tony Roma sometimes. It depends what day of week we're talking about. The pandemic has changed everything. But the pandemic has also changed where we're not going to the transit the way we thought we were. And people will have cars. Even in my mobile home park, people are, when workers come, and even those new apartments, I mean townhouses that opened up on, I can't, Myers, those people are parking now out on the street because they have more than two cars. But if you drive up there to go look at a house, there's no parking in their guest parking spots because the homeowners are parking there. So even though it sounds like a lot of parking, I would say Fish Veracruz needs to have, for every seat that they have, if it would be occupied, plus their help, they need to have parking spaces. Every time I visit Fish Veracruz, I'm one person, but I meet three others there. And two of them come in one car, but the other people all are always in their own car because they're single, like I am. So when it comes to restaurants, you need more parking. And when it comes to shops, if the parking isn't convenient for those shops or where they can drop off a handicapped person, and believe it or not, I think pickleball is more popular now for seniors than any other sport. And they're not going to want, even though they're playing pickleball, they're not going to want to walk far to a pickleball court. Skateboarders are now teenagers and they all come in a car. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Darren Levitt, followed by Gary Levitt, and then Carol Gendel.
Good evening, Council. There's this crazy statistic that I don't know how many people here know that there's something like three or four parking spaces in this country per person. We can't keep building our communities based around parking spaces. We need to build it for the people and the residents of our community. And I think that that's exactly what you are going to be receiving with this development that Lennar has proposed. I haven't heard too much about the type of housing that they're delivering. It is the right type of housing. It is that missing middle income type of housing. It's not high-end, super big homes up in the hills. This is the right type of housing for people that are going to be employees at these restaurants, that are going to be obviously dining at these restaurants. We talk about how many parking stalls are going away, but there's a captive audience of 200 homeowners. That's probably 400 people that when they have a dinner choice, they're going to obviously go to places or preferably go to those places that they can walk to. You know, this project, I can't believe how many things it is doing that is a benefit to this community. It's reducing the trips. It's improving San Marcos Boulevard. The amount of features that are in that park, blowing my mind, dog park, pickleball, pump track, I think Ryan is what you were going for there, that my three- and five-year-old absolutely love. It's not a skate park where it's going to be these rowdy teenagers that take it over and are, you know, the young kids can learn and ride safely in these types of communities. And I love seeing this type of development. It is the right type for San Marcos. It's the right type for the Creek District. And it's bettering our community as a whole. You could also get a different type of developer here. I know Lennar's a really big company, but you're getting Ryan Green, who is a San Marcos community member, who will probably have to leave this community if this project goes awry. So, you know, you could get somebody that's going to stuff down, you know, San Marcos throat, the new California state regulations that allow for a lot more housing on this property. And the city would have a battle on their hands. And I think you're getting a developer over here that actually cares and has been trying in good faith to negotiate with all of their neighbors. But obviously, that's a very difficult challenge, given, you know, the history of this site. We all know the history and know and respect it. And I think that they're doing a commendable job trying to accommodate all of the various impacts here. So with that, I suggest or recommend that you support approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Gary Levitt, followed by Carol Gendel.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. I won't be as eloquent as the person before me. And what I have to say is Eric Bruvold said it much more eloquently than I'm going to be able to. But this is an important evolutionary project for this community. I think the principles of the development that you see here are the types of developments this community is going to see a lot of in the future. It's just what it is. We are going to go in to these effectively underutilized properties where you've got coverage of 20 and 30% of every acre, with the rest all being mostly parking, talking about a sore subject tonight. But this will become our housing of the future. And there will be a change in the nature of the community. And this project, when it's successful, will encourage and lead to other similar projects that's going to change the neighborhood of the Creekside, around the Creekside. In 2007, you approved a Creekside district. And with the exception of some projects that were on the affordable side of things, none, no development has taken place. And that's because the nature of the housing has changed. And I think the success of this project tonight, its future success, will encourage the evolution of the Creekside district and accelerate its development. And then finally, it's important to realize that a project of this type is not creating more infrastructure. There's no more roads that are being built. They already exist. There are no more sewer pipes and water pipes and electric lines and all the rest of it. This is a sort of development that will rejuvenate the economics of a community. One of the things about suburban development that hasn't been faced is that they're very, very expensive to maintain. And most of America is suburban and the places that are 50 and 60 and 70 years old are getting more and more expensive to maintain. And the redevelopment of areas like this, without creating more streets and more infrastructure for cities, is very, very important. So I urge your support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Carol Gendel.
Who knew there were so many people who were going to talk? Good evening, all. First of all, I want to tell you, for the nine years I've lived in San Marcos, I have bemoaned the fact that we do not have a walkable shop area as Escondido does with Grand Avenue. A place where you have shops right on the street, can walk down lots of restaurants. And it seems like this is actually something that's going to be the start of that kind of walkable environment. So I'm actually kind of pleased to see that. I do have one question for you. With all the talk about the housing, I did not hear anything about affordable or low-income housing. What is the price point for these houses going to be? Will they be affordable for the people, the teachers, the fire, the firefighters, the police people, Sheriff's Department, all of the people who are low to moderate income, who are not able to live in San Marcos? Is this, I know it's only 202 units, but are any of these, or what percentage, are dedicated to people who are low income? Would be my question for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All development in our city requires either an onsite development of affordable units or an INLU fee. And our policy has always been, well, generally been, that we oftentimes actually have an INLU pay, an INLU fee paid so that we can pool that money together and we can actually build it. We have 7% of all of our housing stock in the city of San Marcos. More than most cities, that actually is deed restricted affordable. And I'm very proud of that. I know as a council, we've been very intentional about that. But this is going to be an INLU project where they pay an INLU fee. Thank you. Any discussion among the council? And we, this is actually a public hearing, so do we want to keep that public?
Make a declaration?
Well, you know, it depends because I'm thinking we probably want to have further discussions, so probably leave it open. But I just wanted to throw that out there so that you're all clear on that.
Carol and I have had discussions about affordable housing. And I would just offer, as an addendum to what the mayor said, the 7%, I believe is the highest in the county of all of our incorporated cities. And many of the projects that we have got off the ground by those INLU fees. So it provides a starting point for a lot of these projects to come forward. But good comments, Carol. I read in one of the slides, an all-wheel flow course. I believe that's what it was.
I'm not even sure what that is exactly. So if someone knows.
I think it's to not restrict it to skateboards. It can be anything that is.
Yeah, so Darren was wrong and I was wrong. It's a rolling plaza. So I appreciate Darren trying to cover for me. But the idea is exactly what you said. It's for those people that have the scooters, that they have the skates. Actually, roller skates are back in versus inline skates as well as skateboards. So all uses and bicycles.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for you. On the bus stop?
Yes.
Are you already negotiated or been in some discussions with NCTD about the configuration? And will that have a bulb out so that it's a protected stop and not inhibit the flow of vehicles through that area?
So the bus stop already exists. And I don't know, I don't believe there's any plans. I'd have to defer to one of the staff members as to whether or not we're going to have, because final engineering is not done. We haven't started it yet. So whether or not there's a bulb that would be required, I can't answer that.
NCTD provided us a comment letter, and that's what we utilized to do this. We're putting a bus shelter in the exact same location that there's an existing stop.
Excellent, thank you very much. Ryan, when you were talking about repurposing a lot of these items from the existing structures, I'm wondering, and some of the photographs are really great and I get that they're renditions of what you proposed to do. Is there a plan to use any kind of markers? So as people are walking through there, the kids that were sitting on the stumps, I thought was pretty interesting. Those are some very significant timbers. You know, like we do sometimes with parks, we'll put a little placard identifying what tree you're standing in front of. This was at one time blank, something like that. Not expensive, but.
Oh, no, no, no. I mean, that is absolutely what we planned on doing. Because we don't want to just put those there and then no one knows what it's from. We want to have these things, these labels, these brands out there. And that's also part of the QR code journey as well for the customer, for the residents that are out there. So yes, we will definitely have those.
And I think that brings everyone that comes to that area some identity back to where, what used to be here.
That is the idea.
Real quickly, the comment, and you mentioned one particular item, and I believe there were four bullet points. To me, this comes full circle to what the Levitts were saying. This to me is something that I think is going to activate West San Marcos Boulevard.
Yes.
I would agree with some of the comments that it is generally blighted in that area. And I've been waiting for a project, a significant project, to come forward because to me, that would be what a lot of the people, a lot of the developers and property owners would see. Okay, great, fantastic. Now with this, let's move on that. And we talked about the movie theater, and that is a big piece of property. There are restaurants that are right in front.
Yeah.
I would see that as another opportunity for these residents to enjoy that. I'm not sure what will ever become of the theater, if it's going to be revitalized, renovated, or some other plans for that property. But my hope is this kicks off a series of events along West San Marcos Boulevard to bring it to a point where, as the mayor is fond of saying, a destination and not a pass-through.
Right.
There's, and to hear the high praise from the Levitts is significant to me because they've experienced this with North City and they know exactly what you're, what you can look forward to. There are going to be issues, things that are unplanned. But I think it's that focus and that dedication to get this through. And we'll all be very happy at the end when this is completed. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilmember.
First off, thank you, staff, for an incredible presentation. And Ryan, you did phenomenal as well. Marina did ask a question about EV charging. And I recently became an EV vehicle, or electric vehicle owner. And so I've noticed throughout San Marcos that we could probably use a few extra chargers. So can you tell us a little bit about that?
So I'm going to have Steve Cook come up, tell us exactly how many chargers that will be on the property outside the boundaries of our homes. But I do want to make a note that we are going to be including EV charging in every single home that we built. So not only will we have it within the commercial realm or in the guest realm, but we're also going to have it for every single home that we built.
Super, thanks.
Hi, Stephen Cook with Intersecting Metrics. We did the traffic and parking for the project. So the project is designed to meet the city's climate action plan. So it'll have 5% of the total spaces on site of that 117, so eight total spaces, will actually be EV charged ready. So, you know, that will have the charging stations from day one. And another 18 will be plumbed for EV charging. So if, in the future, if additional funds or the HOA or someone wants to come in and actually provide those services, it'll already be plumbed. So we won't have to rip up the concrete. It can, we can just wire it quickly and put in the charging station.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, I had a follow-up question on that. So you were kind of fast on that.
Sorry.
So there are eight total spaces that are totally charged, have chargers. And this is in the retail part, correct?
It's within the 117 total spaces and they're spaced throughout. So some will be by the retail, some will be by the park.
Oh, and then there was a discussion about handicapped parking, and I thought I'd bring this up to you.
Yes, so handicap parking, we are providing it based on ADA standards. Let me get the correct numbers for you. So there will be five ADA spaces, just standard ADA spaces. And then there'll be two van spaces, oh, I'm sorry, three van spaces. And one of the. And one of the van spaces will actually have an EV charger.
Okay, and then back to the plumbed spaces, you will have 18 additional plumbed spaces for, okay.
Correct, so, sorry.
Yeah, and then, and then in every garage, there's going to be at least one? Is that what I was?
There, there will be EV charging ready. I'll, I'll let Ryan answer that.
Okay, okay.
I do have a follow-up about the EV charging. It, it's not clear to me when you say that they're going to be, as far as location, closer to the retail. Does that mean that they're going to be accessible to the general public, to customers, to residents?
So all of the 117 spaces are open to anybody in the public. That's part of the shared parking agreements. So those, of those seven, or eight total EV spaces that will be in place from day one, those will be open to anybody that is within the area. The residents will actually be within their garages, so it will be directly available to the residents.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay. Wait, did you have one to follow up on that, too?
Not on, I'm, I'm, I'm moving on from the.
Okay, move on, move on. Let's do it.
I'm, I'm satisfied with their answer. You know, like the mayor mentioned earlier, and I think a few others of the speakers talked about kind of their, their history with this destination, you know, Restaurant Row. I've lived in San Marcos since 1996, and certainly have spent a number of evenings having dinner with family and friends and going to the 55-yard line when I was in college. And I, I still to this day see Aaron probably at least a couple of times a month. We have, we have council offices upstairs that I think I've only used it once in the first year that I've been on the council because I have all my meetings at, at the coffee shop. It's just more comfortable and a little bit more convenient to meet at. And then, Maureen, you mentioned Gentleman's Choice. They, you know, when I was in college, they probably had one of the best happy hours for us, like soup and salad and that kind of thing. Certainly miss them to this day. However, having said all that, you know, it's, the market's changed and it, the, the time is, you know, we live in a different time now. And I think we've all kind of seen how Restaurant Row has evolved, unfortunately, over, you know, since the, since the pandemic. And I think a couple of years ago, when the news broke that Restaurant Row is going to be purchased and it was going to change, there was a lot of shock in the community. And I think the initial response from the community was, you know, a little bit of anger, frustration. And, and I think to Lennar's credit, and listening to the feedback of the community and getting very creative on their design and what the amenities that they're going to bring to San Marcos, I think it's a testament to why we didn't really have any negative feedback from the community tonight at, at the council meeting when we're, when we're actually considering this. I know that there's some disagreements with Fish House and the parking, and that's unfortunate. But we, I don't think there was a single resident that wrote a letter to the council or came here tonight to speak against the project. And again, I think that, that speaks volumes on the efforts that Lennar put in with designing this project and really coming up with an idea that I think is going to, and this, a few of the speakers touched on this already, but it's going to be a starting point of sprinkling some life, you know, along the Boulevard is what I'm calling it. And that life, those, those initial 200 units are going to, those are going to be future customers for, for future restaurants that are going to be part of this project, but also existing restaurants and stores up and down San Marcos Boulevard. And I can just tell you, you know, having lived in San Marcos since 96, you know, San Marcos Boulevard, you know, had it, had its heyday. And it's, it needs, it needs that life to be sprinkled up and down with a few projects like this in the coming years to keep it vibrant and keep it exciting and be a place that people want to go to and spend time, and it's walkable. It's, it's very flat, as we all know. It's one of the few parts of our, our city that, that is flat. You know, all of our neighborhoods have the words hills, you know, after, you know, Santa Fe Hills, Santa Leo Hills, Discovery Hills. There's a reason why they're all named hills, right? And so this is one of the areas in our community where it's flat, it's walkable. You can get to, you know, jobs, you can get to entertainment options and restaurants and movie theaters and, and such. And so I think this is going to be a start of something really special for the Boulevard. And I'm just excited that, that I think it's going to, you know, probably, you know, get passed tonight. And there are some other aspects about it that I really liked, too, that I made some notes as you guys were talking. But one of the things that I've, I've noticed over the years of living in the community is because of the, the way the road is designed, and there's just two lanes in each direction, every time somebody had to, you know, turn their blinker on and make a right-hand turn to go into Restaurant Row, it would stop everybody behind them. And it would cause this traffic jam. And, you know, sometimes I've actually seen it, over, over the decades, I've seen a couple of fender benders as a result of that. Well, they're, they're, the traffic enhancement that staff and Lennar put together, I think, are really going to, you know, alleviate some of that. And it's going to help that traffic through that part of town flow even better, which is going to be great. And then, as mentioned here, a couple of different times with the, the kind of unique aspects of the park, it's going to fill some recreational needs that our community doesn't currently have with regards to pickleball. And, and then of course, the four, four, whatever we're calling it now, the four-wheel skate park, bike park, whatever it is. But I, but it, it's unique. We don't have that anywhere. And I think that's going to be another benefit for the, the children of our community, and it's going to give them an opportunity to, to get outdoors and exercise and, and get some fresh air and, and give them a healthy activity option as well. So there's a lot of really neat things about this, the economic development component, the recreational component. And, and I love some of the, the, and I'll, I'll turn it over to my colleagues here in a second. I know I've been long-winded, but.
Feel free, feel free, keep going.
The legacy piece of this is really special, too. And I, I just think that you've put a lot of thought in it, Ryan and team. And just really appreciate you doing that. I think that also really helped with bringing the community and the residents along in support of your project. So thank you.
Okay, yes, deputy mayor.
I forgot to disclose one thing. I don't know if it's necessary, but I did listen to the entire planning commission audio file. So I just want to disclose that, too. So I have several things here to say. Let me start with this. I like, I like the community concept of the project. I like that you listened to the community on the park features. I think it was very smart to put pickleball courts there. I like that you resolved the parking situation with Cosina because when we met, we weren't sure that was going to happen. I like that you continue to work with Fish House Barra Cruz, and hopefully we'll come to a mutual solution. And I also like, as many have stated, how much you worked with the community and listened to the community. My biggest issue, and we've had this discussion in person, is the process. And I think that I wished you had worked as hard before the planning commission happened as you did after the planning commission meeting happened. Because I think that would have taken a lot of angst out of, away from many people. So I just want to say that. And I agree, this is kind of reiterating a little bit about what Mike had said, that this is a good project for San Marcos Boulevard. It's kind of, it's going to kind of set the standard for what's going to happen there on both sides of the street. I think you're, you know, setting the standard high, so hopefully others will be able to, to follow your, your lead. Let's see, I do have one question. And that is, so those are my comments, but I have one question. Let me just make sure I didn't. I'm not going to say all that, it's already been said. Are you going to disclose to the homeowners in writing that there will be a pickleball court and a park near their homes, as well as the industrial area on the one side? So there's no surprises. I know there's not going to be lights there for a lot of noise, but sometimes people are known to complain about noises from pickleball. So I just want to know how that's going to be disclosed to the residents.
Without a doubt, without reservation for our benefit and for the customer's benefit as well. We have other communities that do have pickleball courts in the city of San Diego, and that has plagued us, the noise that comes from it, and the lack of knowledge that came from the new residents that came in. So we absolutely are going to be disclosing all the uses that are going to be going around there. And then also, also any of the business uses as well.
Okay.
100%.
And that'll be in writing that your.
It'll be in writing that they sign, and we save, so everyone knows where they stood. 100, absolutely.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. And then, let's see, you already covered about how you're dealing with the dining and retail. So I think that's all my comments.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, mayor. I do have a couple of questions before I make my comments. And my questions are really with respect to some of the comments that we heard from the Butler family and from their council. And so I'm not sure if, if city or Lennar can respond. And what I'm, what I'm focusing on is what we've heard today in the issue with the, the location of the park as a taking of their easement. And what, what's said today, if I understood correctly, is that this easement that exists or allegedly exists is not intended for general public use. And that, what I also heard was that there's 36 spaces that are designated. So I'm wondering, is there a response to some of these comments?
Yeah, we could respond to that. I'm going to invite Jennifer Chavez up. She's, she's represented us in reviewing the, the parking, shared parking agreements and can speak to it much more specifically than I can.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Chavez. I'm a partner with Shepherd Mullen, council for Lennar on this. And we've taken a really close look at the, at the parking easements and the, the concerns that Fish House has raised about them. You know, I'm confident.
Could you possibly pull your mic a little bit closer, Jennifer, so you can get your comments on the record? Thank you, they're very important.
Sorry, I, is that better? Am I sounding better? That's what I said, is we, we reviewed these, these easements. We're confident that the project is compliant with the easements and that development of the project is not going to result in any kind of a taking. We had a eminent domain partner in our office look at the, at the easements, at, under, listened to the planning commission hearing, and he submitted a, a letter as well. There are, there are two easements. And what we heard the Butlers talk about is the 1990 easement that does create reciprocal parking rights for each party to use the parking areas on the other's site. And then also makes reference to 36 designated spaces in favor of Fish House Barra Cruz. The problem is, the easement was recorded without an exhibit A that indicates where these 36 designated spaces are. It's recorded in 1990 and has never been amended or rerecorded to indicate where these spaces are. There's nothing on the ground to give you inquiry notice or any sort of notice that these 36 designated spaces are in any particular place. And until the planning commission hearing, we had never heard that the spaces were alleged to be in the place that Mr. Butler described. And so I think a court would look at that and say, there is an easement right to use 36 spaces on the property, on the project site. And it's actually bigger than the project site. It's the old Eubanks site. So it's the project site plus Buffalo Wild Wings plus Cosina del Choro. But any event, the, the Fish House site, the Fish House users will have the right to use all 117 open parking spaces. So there's full compliance there. The, the other thing, so that's, I, I think that answers the, the question, councilmember. But please feel free if you've, if you've got additional questions on that or concerns. But the, the bottom line is, there was no exhibit recorded, so there is no, there's no way to, to say that these, there, there's no basis or reason to believe that the park is being placed in the, in an area where there are 36 spaces designated for Fish House. Fish House has full access to all the parking, all the open parking spaces on the site.
And I take it that the unrecorded exhibit has not been produced by?
No.
By anyone?
No, no. No, we've, we've made many, many inquiries at the recorder's office and of prior property owners and, and even Mr. Wilson. Nobody's been able to, to dig it up.
Thank you for that clarification. I like, everybody's expressed, I really like this project. I think it's a great project. I think it's long overdue. Like many of our residents, I have a long history in the city, and it's, Restaurant Row has been a very much part of, right, the, the city's history. And so I'm very excited to, to see this come before us. I share some of the sentiments that Deputy Mayor Jenkins shared about the process and what was done before the planning commission and after. And I will go back through those. But I do like the project, and I do think that it's very much needed in that area. When I look at the planning commission min, minutes, it does specifically state that the commissioners had concerns about the lack of low-income housing for the size of the project. And I do share that, I think especially for the site, the location, and what is to come and the density. I think it would be appropriate to have some of that. It's not part of the equation. I understand my colleagues prefer the in-lu fees, and I also understand that that is the current policy of, of this council and therefore of the city. But I do want us to start thinking about how we reshape that and how we look at that because, especially if we're going to see this development that we're all anticipating, especially in that part of the city, and now that we're getting ready to reopen via Barra Cruz and, right, and we have these new infrastructure project that's being completed, I think it's really kind of a perfect timing for us to think about that. We do have a housing crisis, a crisis where so many residents cannot afford housing. And so I think that is an important piece. So I share some of that concern. But having said that, I do like the project. I do like what's been done, and I do like that, the preservation that is, that it's going to happen. So having said that, my intention is to support, even though there is no low-income proposal to construct.
Thank you, councilmember. And certainly at our goal-setting, you could bring that up, whether the rest of the council would support a policy change. And I'm glad that you're not trying to hold a developer to a different standard than has been our policy. I, I want to talk a little bit about the Restaurant Row and kind of the history. You know, I moved here, like I said, in 1987. I actually, when I was young, a young sales agent, I was a new home sales agent, and I actually sold a home to the manager of Gentleman's Choice. And, you know, just to see how it used to be and how it was so alive and it was so, it was always packed. The parking lot was always packed back then. And, you know, as things have, have, you know, closed over time, including the Sublime. And then when you had San Marcos Brewery closed during COVID, you know, they just couldn't deal with the state mandates of opening and closing and all of that, you know, those are, and I remember I went there that day, that they, with our last day, and they were crying. I was kind of crying. It was, it was a really, it was a really hard thing. You know, I am really excited to see something new come out of the ground there. I think that it's been, you know, it was made by Jim Eubanks by hand, and so a lot of the infrastructure is very old and crumbling. And I think, you know, the restoration, the revitalization, seeing something new start there. And I, and I would, I would say, too, you know, one of the things when I first moved to San Marcos, that was literally the only place to go. And I remember thinking, okay, there's not much happening in this city. And it was just, you know, a lot of strip malls, it wasn't really a go-to place except for Restaurant Row. And, you know, now that we have North City coming, I really am excited to see something happen in old San Marcos, in the older part where it really needs a facelift and something new. in the older part where it really needs a facelift and something new to bring some activated space, uh, here in the city. And, you know, the Blade Place, whatever, whatever we're calling the Little Wheel Place. I know that that's going to bring the families and the people that are really going to be out and, um, enjoying the space. And I really, really can't say enough about the response. I mean, you listened, but you also actually responded. You actually did things that were meaningful. And to me, you know, I, I, I know there was a lot of angst early on, including myself. Um, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm definitely not gonna say that I wasn't. I, I was really concerned when, um, you know, I had talked to the Eubanks over so many years, and they promised me back in two thousand sixteen, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna change this. We're gonna uplift it. We're going to do all of these cool things and make, you know, outdoor spaces activated with furniture and all of this. And it just never happened. And, uh, you know, when people were saying to me, oh, my gosh, you know, it was sold in the middle of the night. Who bought it? Who, what's gonna, what's gonna happen? I was anxious too. And I was thinking, you know, if someone comes in and they try to pretend that it never happened, that Restaurant Row never happened, that would really change our community. And so for me, I, I was really anxious about it when I started to hear the plans. I have to say that in the beginning, it wasn't the plan that it ended up being. So the fact that you listened but also responded was really important to our community. So I'm gonna give you kudos for that. Don't, don't get too excited about it because I rarely do that. You might not ever get it again. But I, I think, um, I think that this will end up being something really good for our city. I think that I, um, excited that so many people came to actually support this and took their time out of their, um, busy schedule. So I'll wrap up my comments as to not keep you too much longer. But, um, I, I think that, you know, Casino Del Choro, having their, um, issues addressed is good, and I hope that you do come to some conclusion with Fish House. My kids used to eat there all the time. I used to tell them that the halibut, um, kebabs were, were chicken so that they would eat it. Um, so I have a lot of good memories about a lot of businesses that were in Restaurant Row. A lot of good memories, as I know everyone else that has lived in San Marcos for a long time, um, I do. And so, um, I just, I'm, I'm excited to support this project. I do believe that you, uh, will continue working with Fish House via Veracruz, um, or Fish House Veracruz, and, uh, that some good conclusion will come from all of it, as you did with Casino Del Choro. So, uh, with that, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, um, I move to approve all of the entitlements as we previously stated, because I don't wanna go through them yet a second time. If you'd like me to, um, Mrs. Peak, I will. I could actually read them from here.
Not necessary, Madam Mayor, but thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, uh, then I would make a motion to approve all of the, um, all of the items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? No. Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to the next order of business. We have oral communications. I do not see any speaker slips. Do we have any, Mr. Skolik? Oh, we do. Good thing I didn't forget this time, as I often do. Okay, Marlene Walder, regarding, uh, food bank.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and, uh, council members and others. I lost the whole audience. I just want to say, mobile home parks have, uh, been known to be more low-income people. And I have to say, we put on a food bank at our particular mobile home park, and we've been very fortunate. Uh, people have been very generous from other, I don't know, food banks also, because we have to have a license to do it. But we used to be lucky to get thirty people, um, on the given day. And then we started getting fifty people, and today we're open from eleven on till the food is gone, and we had seventy-five people before two o'clock. And so all I can say is, every time something else comes up that costs them more money, they're having a larger struggle. And we've been very fortunate with the types of food that we get, but our park management's very against it. And so it makes it very hard on us. And we have to get everything gone, you know, in a short time, condensed down to one table, and we come back all the time, um, to keep making sure if the fresh produce doesn't go, it can't be there for two, three days usually. Uh, it's perishable. But we have no extra facility to keep boxes or anything else. And I guess my point is, the community, we have people coming from outside our park, but we don't advertise it. And I'm just seeing more and more people actually using our food bank in the park and, um, having to walk down because there's no parking. We don't know who the cars belong to. But, um, there's a lot of residents who have more than four parked cars, and each one is supposed to have two spaces in their carport and to use them. And I come down, we have twenty-five parking spaces, and fifteen to eighteen are being occupied by. Anyway, it was about the food bank and how, uh, rent increased, the water increased, the electric increased, and the sewer increased, you know? It, it's just really getting to everybody, not just, you know, seniors, but it really needs for that rent control to be controlled. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Um, just on food banks real quick, uh, I think that Summit Church still, uh, runs one, and you may want to, uh, check with them. They just recently moved. They were right there by the university. Uh, but they have moved, so you might want to, uh, check out if they, if they are still continuing. They actually used to be, um, a super pantry or something like, along those lines. Summit Church, you might-
Just moved over.
Yeah, I know, but I think they, they might still, they might still be doing it. Yeah, you might, you might check with them. Okay, moving on to reports. Uh, Sandeg. Sorry, I don't, I don't mean to be dismissive. I just, I know Mrs. Peak doesn't like when people are speaking from the, the-
I like stuff on the record, so this back and forth in the audience doesn't go for you.
So anyway, sorry, I, I wasn't trying to be submissive, or s- trying, trying to dismissive. I just don't want you to think that at all. Thank you. And Sandeg, Mr. Musgrove, you are, you were filling in.
Yes, Ms. Jones. So, uh, Sandeg, on Friday, we, uh, introduced our new interim CEO, Colleen Clemenson, who is the current deputy CEO for planning. She'll be taking over from Hassan Akrata, who leaves in about a week's time. Uh, she'll take over with a contract beginning January sixteenth through the end of December. However, the anticipated date or timeframe for the appointment of the new permanent CEO is May to June. So we, we allowed for extensive time just in case there were some issues and perhaps can't come to terms with, uh, the identified person. It gives us some latitude to find somebody. On our agenda, we had the SR one twenty-five, which is the toll road that extends from essentially the ninety-four down to the nine oh five in the East County. Um, there've been some problems. There've been problems going back several years with the readers not tracking accounts correctly. The discussion got pretty in-depth with some of the board members, and a lot of revelations came out that our systems that we have for our toll roads are not working. They're either not tracking correctly, not billing correctly, certainly not accounting by name and account number for debits based on a transponder. You can cer- you can use your Clean Air vehicle, Mike, if you have it registered with the stickers. You're welcome to use it. And if you have a car that's registered to a transponder, but you don't have the transponder in your car, you can use the express lanes too. But those are dependent on a camera system that identifies your license plate, links it back to your account, and then debits that account. And we come to find out that those camera systems are not working. And for those who use the express lanes but don't have a transponder or a Clean Air vehicle or are not registered to a transponder, just want to get home a little more quickly, the camera system then takes a picture, verifies that it's not a permitted vehicle, and then the process begins for notifying that driver that they have to pay the, essentially what would have been the fare, or it will link into the DMV and affect registration and licensing, but that link is not working either. So, um, the discussion from staff was all the things that we're doing to make it better. But when I asked specifically, do you have a reckoning for how much revenue has been lost, they didn't have a clear answer. So we've been paying a vendor for several years now, several million dollars, to maintain a system that doesn't work. And now we have a new vendor coming on board next year, and in the interim, we're gonna continue to pay that unresponsive vendor to maintain a system that doesn't work. So, um, I just encourage anyone who has an interest in where their tax dollars go to pay attention to what happens at Sandeg. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, I guess. I don't know. Thank you, I guess.
Yes, the bring, the bearer of bad news.
Uh, League of California Cities, council member.
Oh, thank you. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Councilmember Nunez on being reappointed as the second vice president. Is that right?
First.
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 First. First among many. So we did have our executive, uh, reappointments. Uh, Councilmember Nunez is the first vice president. Priya Bhatel from Carlsbad is our current president. We'll, we'll have a second year in that position. Uh, I was reappointed, it was a president's appointment from the League of California Cities up in Sacramento, I suppose, to continue to represent the county on the Public Safety Commission. And there's now a second, and that is, uh, Councilmember Rick Robinson, who's a retired fire chief. He's, he's an Oceanside, a council member, so the two of us will be the league's representatives for the county. Uh, we had a, uh, some administrative information that came out, and then a very brief song and dance by Councilmember Musgrove on SB forty-three. So we did talk about some of the issues that are coming up with that. And if you're not familiar with SB forty-three, that is, was recently passed by the state, and it effectively expands the definition of somebody who is gravely disabled. And as our deputies can tell you, that, um, when they happen upon someone who is unable to care for themselves or others, and they are exhibiting signs of distress, let's say, generally based on, uh, uh, mental health issues, then they can be taken to, uh, a facility, an LPS-approved facility, to get treatment. The new SB forty-three expands that definition to include, uh, somebody who is in a, an intoxicated state, let's say, who, who is not able to care for themselves, or they can be taken away and, and, and to a place where they can receive treatment. So the legislation allows for the entities up to one year to set and, and place the plans to find those locations and set policies. The county of San Diego elected to not initiate that process simply because we don't have the infrastructure in place. Our hospitals are overburdened now. The few facilities that we have that are able to accept people to treat them and, and get them the treatment that they need are few and far between. And so it's going to have to be a coordinated effort between our hospital systems, law enforcement, and all of our first responders, regardless of where they're coming in on this. It could be from medical staff, fire services, to ensure that we're not, uh, completely shutting down our services for the sake of, um, effectively cleaning our streets, and I think that's the motivation behind the bill. So-
I don't think they're actually not implementing it. They're just delaying the implementation, which they had the right to do up to two years.
Correct.
Um, yeah, I, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right. So that was in the legislation. You had that option, and the county of San Diego elected to exercise that option.
Yeah, and I know there was a lot of angst, uh, with the hospitals because they didn't feel that they could, without a clear, um, implementation plan from the county, which they're in charge of that. They didn't feel that they could actually do that, so-
So some, some of, it's exactly right. There's no implementation plan. There are guidelines from the state, but like so many of the mandates that come down, there's no funding for them. So if there are funds that can get us to that point, then it's a lot easier to, to arrive at that location. But as of this point, the burden is going to be put down onto the several counties, and the smaller ones in Northern California will probably have shared burdens. Some of our counties up in Northern California, um, two, two or three counties might share one custody facility because they're so small, but even, uh, they'll have the problem with, uh, finding a facility to, to help out their patients, so.
Okay, um, moving on to North County Transit District.
Um, I did, I think, uh, so the meeting happened on November the sixteenth, um, to last month. And from what I understand, I think it was the shortest meeting that ever happened. So we had consent items to approve, and, um, the big highlight was, uh, that the board approved or adopted a proclamation recognizing January twenty twenty-four as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And, uh, the board signed on to the U.S. Department of Transportation's, um, Leaders Against Human Trafficking pledge. Um, so from what I understand, there's sort of a marketing campaign. There's posters that are added to, um, uh, around the region. Um, so I think that's a really important, and, uh, that was the highlight. And, um, the, there's no new executive director that's been identified yet. I think that process is still ongoing.
Right, so, um, we had, gosh, I think a couple of meetings this month. But, um, we should have an announcement on, at our next monthly board meeting, which I believe is the Thursday, if it's the twenty-first, so. And by the way, we did it in four months, not eight. Just letting you know.
There's no reason it should take eight months, if you ask me, but just-
Just have to point that out.
You're preaching to the choir. Okay, um, let's see. Oh, uh, North County Dispatch.
Uh, so we had our last meeting, uh, in November. Uh, so I attended November twenty-ninth, and we did get to recognize the executive director, Christopher Heron, uh, for his five-year anniversary. Um, so it was great to see that. And, um, the big highlight, if you remember, uh, the city of Escondido is joining the joint powers.
Right.
And so that's still the highlight. Um, Deputy Mayor Joe Garcia will be representing on behalf of the, uh, city of Escondido, and so that transition is happening.
When are they actually gonna be a hundred percent on board? Do we know?
I think that's already agreed, Chief, right? Is our chief still here? But I think that's, that's already done.
Yeah, I, I believe it's, it's done. Um, sorry, Chief had to, to leave a little earlier.
Oh, we were too low, no, no, too slow for him. No, I'm just kidding. Okay, all right, great. Um, Clean Energy. Councilmember Musgrove, you attended a lot of stuff this month.
A lot of meetings, um, for administrative purposes. We meet at the end of January, so we're on a holiday break right now. But I, I mentioned in a previous meeting that we had identified Greg Wade, who is a Solana Beach city manager, is our next, um, chief executive officer. There was a, an FPPC filing, an anonymous filing, that, uh, he might not otherwise be qualified for the position. And we received notice from the FPPC that they are not going to investigate. They've determined that he is qualified to apply. But again, um, the city asked, City of Solana Beach asked us if we could hold off till February to give them a little bit more time to identify, recruit and identify, um, a replacement for him. And Barbara Boswell, our current CEO, has agreed to stay on as long as necessary to ensure a smooth transition. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see. That is it?
Mayor, if I may, before we go into the, I do have that the agreement was actually executed on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, when, uh, the Escondido council approved and voted five to zero to join. And then what I do have in my notes is that they, um, they're anticipating to be able to go live in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was kinda wondering. Okay, good. Um, and then, uh, city council business visits. Artificial grass liquidators? Who did that?
So, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Nunez and I did this yesterday with Tess, and, uh, we had a really good time. I don't know if there's any photos or if it's too late for photos. There we go. Yeah, so this, um, this was our business tour, um, that we met with Matt Fontes, who's the area account manager, uh, for, uh, AGO, and, uh, the local San Marcos manager, uh, his name is Shad Ishin. And, uh, this, this company, their, their corporate headquarters is, is in Temecula, so they're, they're some- And this, this company, their, their corporate headquarters is in Temecula, so they're, they're somewhat local, but they obviously have a San Marcos location now at 696 Rancheros Drive, which they opened in March of 2022. It's a showroom, and they also have, as you can see here, but they have showrooms across the nation. It's a quite large, quite a large company. They have showrooms in California, Nevada, and Florida. They're one of the largest turf distributors in the USA. They have 26 different varieties of artificial grass, there's some examples of some of those 26. And their main customers are to contractors who then work for, like homeowners and commercial property owners to, to, to have the astroturf installed at their properties. And, but they will do, you can go as a, you know, just a regular private citizen, you can just walk in there and, and if you want to do like a do it, do it yourself type of project, they will sell to you as well. They just don't have like contractors that, that install it as part of their business model. The product has a 16-year warranty, which is a pretty long time, I, I think, for, for something like that. And they say it typically lasts about 20-plus years. And their business really started growing during COVID as more and more folks were spending less money on vacations and stuff like that and staying home. So they saw a big boom there, and they expect that over the next five years that the artificial turf industry is going to be a $1 trillion industry. And they're, they manufacture their products in the USA, Mexico, and Vietnam.
Kitty's liking it, apparently.
Apparently so.
Yes.
Yeah, Mike, I remember you asked a question about whether or not this product is pet-friendly. And they said that it is manufactured for...
Yeah, yeah, for dogs, and yeah, mhm. And they, there's, if you are gonna use it for, you know, your pet, then there's, there's some special like types of sands and stuff that kind of absorb pet stuff and whatnot, better than other stuff, so, yeah, so they, they definitely accommodate for pets.
My grand pup likes it. Yeah, my grand pup likes my fake grass in my backyard.
I was honestly, I was shocked when I heard what a large industry it is and how much they're expected to grow, but it's understandable considering the, our dire water situation and, and the conservation efforts that are happening. And they're in our backyard, and it's been, do you remember how many years they've been here?
During COVID.
Yeah, well, no, they opened their San Marcos location in March of 22.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
Smart. Anything else?
Quickly.
What's that?
Yesterday afternoon, I stopped for a chamber ribbon cutting at Dynamic Abilities Pediatric Therapy 950 Boardwalk. Fantastic, two sisters who have opened up occupational therapy and physical therapies specifically for pediatric patients. And they're very excited about providing this service in San Marcos. So we got them in touch with Dr. Green, Greenberg, I believe is Goldstein, I can't remember, it's one of the two, who is the president at St. Augustine.
Well, I was wondering if they got educated at St. Augustine.
No, they didn't, it was, they, their education precedes the opening of the campus here. But they are very interested in providing the externships for their students, which is extremely important for them to get their degrees. And I gave the information to Tess, and Tess is reaching out to the sisters, and we are going to get them, A, the, the externships they need, but then spread the word that that service is now available in San Marcos, which is huge for the community.
Yeah, definitely, and I think St. Augustine also does some sorts of giving back to the community for lower-income folks too.
Yep, and they're...
So I wonder if they were, they'll work together on that, that would be nice.
Yeah, this is a family-run operation, the, the two sisters, their, their younger sisters are involved, husband, it's just fantastic, I met the entire family there, it's a great operation.
So it's a family affair.
It really is.
Love it. Okay, so, we're not going to have another meeting until after the first of the year, right? So unless we have a, I know unless we have actually a special meeting, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm all excited about being done. What's going on with the creek? I think we have something fun coming up.
We do, and I know it's been a long night, so I will power through the slides, but there's some really good news.
I have jet lag still coming in from Texas yesterday.
So we, we're letting Isaac have his fun, this is a very engineering slide, but he wanted to share with you the insider picture on the expansion joints that are going into the bridge. So these expansion joints are the last components of the driving surface on Via Veracruz that need to be installed, and that's happening this week. And as you know, the expansion, expansion joints are there to help the bridge expand and contract and keep it structurally safe. And then you're able to see that paving on Via Veracruz was completed prior to Thanksgiving. The commercial driveways have been completed, which is very exciting, and we're expecting to stripe the roadway later this week. Discovery was fully paved after Thanksgiving, and Discovery is also going to be getting striped this week as well. So two big milestones. And then, as council knows, on Friday, Via Veracruz Bridge, which is going to be dedicated and named the Pierre Harris E-Boat Bridge, we will have a small ceremony for her on Friday to dedicate the bridge to her. And then, the real good news for tonight is that Via Veracruz is going to open to traffic on Monday, the 18th. So that is a very big day.
All the way through to San Marcos Boulevard and all the way into Discovery Hills.
Yes, so as next week progresses, final, final traffic hiccups, we need to close bend for a couple of days to pave, and then we will reopen prior to the holiday break. And we're continuing to work with Shea Development to coordinate opening of the Discovery Extension, which is tentatively planned prior to the break as well, as long as Shea can get the appropriate crews out to get everything completed and opened up.
I think we need to make sure we call them to make sure that happens.
Oh, Isaac spends a lot of quality time calling Shea, so he's, he's working on it.
He can be very compelling.
He, he can.
Okay, all right, so back to my excitement of saying Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year, we'll see you in the new year, unless, of course, we have to have a special meeting, which hopefully we don't, but if we do, if not, just everyone have a very safe and blessed holiday season. And with that, this, this meeting's adjourned.